Good evening. I believe we're still waiting for a couple of commissioners to connect. And I just reset the link, so it's the first thing they see in their box if they're looking for it.
Thank you.
Evening, gentlemen. Rebecca.
Good evening.
How's your, uh, how's your pneumonia, Craig?
Yeah.
Uh, pretty much better. Still a little bit of a trace cough, but all the, all the fever and all that stuff is long gone now. That's it. Thank you.
Good to hear.
Director Malika.
Hello, Chair. Sorry, my computer was having issues logging in today.
We're good.
Says that I cannot start my video for whatever it's worth.
Happens to the best of us.
Let me check, uh, let me check on Prime Gov again. Oh, there you go.
As soon as we can see the surfboard, we're good.
Uh, I'm going to mute and give Commissioner Vice Chair Mazza a quick call.
There he is. Hey, Skylar. You guys with the fancy new processors that allow your Zoom video, the background to be blurry. Mine doesn't have that feature.
Really?
Yeah, the graphics card won't keep up or something. I don't know.
So it's, it's your computer, not the, not the program?
Yes, it's a, yeah, it's a MacBook, but it's a couple of years old. So there you go.
I ordered some old timey Malibu posters and they should be in this week. So I'm just gonna put those behind me.
Well, there you go.
Um, Alex and Parker, is there a way, Vice Chair Mazza is present in the meeting under the identity Robbie today? Is there a way to enable his video without him signing in under his own email?
I just saw a screen message saying Robbie is now the co-host.
We could just rename Robbie to John Mazza if that's John Mazza.
That is the case, and that would be super helpful if you could.
Okay, that's no problem.
And can you see if you can enable your video now?
There he is.
There I go, I think.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm not moving. Access allowed?
You're on, John.
It looks frozen.
There you go. For some reason, the, the link wouldn't work.
Okay, um, Chair, I believe you're ready to go.
Hey. Counting heads. We got everybody here, it looks like. So here we go. Good evening, friends and neighbors. I'd like to call order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting date of May 1st, 2023. Happy birthday, Lauren. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org front slash virtual meeting. At the screen, at that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is open. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute from each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, would you show the slide, please? Very nice. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and for the public. And by the way, that was, that was Lauren Doyle, whose birthday is today. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Peak? Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Yeah, here.
You have a quorum.
Wonderful. Um, approval of the agenda.
Uh, Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as staff recommends and to move item four A to the last position and five A to a date uncertain. And the reason for four A moving is I am recused on that item.
And, um, you know, as things have gone on, and I've looked at this a hundred times, I, I too have to recuse myself on three A one. So right off the bat, I'll take mine first and take a chance that it won't take too long or however that goes, but, um, I will, uh, I recuse myself on three A one. Is everybody in agreement on Vice Chair Mazza's?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Dennis, you've got to unfortunately shut yourself off for about one minute. I will make, but.
Oh, go ahead, Vice Chair Mazza. Yeah, let's go ahead and handle the agenda first. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I was, uh, does he have to recuse himself by shutting off, or can I just make a motion to, uh, approve that one item?
Yeah, we can, we can, everyone can vote. No one needs to turn off any video right now and approving the agenda. If item three A one is old from the consent calendar, then yes, Chair Smith will have to go through the normal um, uh, recusal process, turn off the camera, turn off the audio, and we'll go ahead and text him or reach out to him individually when it's his time to come back on.
Chair, would you like me to call the roll?
What? Yeah, we haven't made a motion yet.
Uh, you, I thought you made a motion to approve the agenda and seconded by Commissioner Jennings. Um, so Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then and then we just go on back to you, right?
Yeah, for, for the moment, Vice Chair, yes. So we have written in our communications from the public, communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda, but for which the planning commission has subject matter jurisdiction. The commission may not act on these matters except for to refer the matters to staff or schedule the matters for a future agenda. Do we have any speakers? Rebecca?
Uh, yes, we, well, let me refresh my screen. We had a speaker here a moment ago. Let me see if I see her in the meeting. Um, okay, Joe Drummond, uh, is, has signed up in advance to speak this evening. If there are other members of the public present in the meeting who wish to speak and have not signed up to do so, please click the raise hand button while she's providing her comments.
Hi there. I was gonna have a video in response to John Mazza at the last meeting, asking if the commissioners have a conflict of interest in their position. If they have, if you have a video, I'd love to play it and talk with it. So this planning commission noted with the, the, this, um, project, he'll talk about it. Oh, there should be volume. Maybe there isn't.
Alex and Parker, um, is there a volume enabled for this?
Uh, members of the council, uh, the matter before you tonight is an appeal of the planning commission's denial of a coastal development permit for a single family residence at sixty seven zero one Porthead. Here's the area photograph and vicinity map of the project site, which is a vacant residential lot located in the Point Dune residential neighborhood. The site's topography descends from Porthead Road towards a stream located at the rear of the property and development, development will occur on the flattest portion of the site closest to the street. The proposed project consists of a new seven thousand three hundred and fourteen square foot two-story residence with attached three car garage and detached pool house, including a new onsite wastewater treatment system. The project includes a site plan review to allow portions of the residence and pool house trellis to exceed eighteen feet in height up to twenty four feet. However, the planning commission determined that two of the required findings for site plan review could not be made. More specifically, finding number two, in that the project adversely affects neighborhood character and finding five, in that the project is not consistent with the general plan and LCP. The commission placed, uh, a weight on the size of the residence and found the project to be too large and incompatible to the neighborhood. Since the site plan, uh, review cannot be approved, the commission determined that the project is not consistent with the general plan and LCP.
Planning noted with this eighty nine hundred square foot project that the fifty homes adjacent averaged only twenty nine.
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Reverse the planning commission's denial for the project at six seven zero one Portishead. Here's the resolution dated January tenth, two thousand and eighteen. It is approved and signed by Mayor Skylar Peak. There should be strong rules for who can be appointed, given that we have here coming up, the electrical permit applied for and signed by Skylar Peak for the same project four years later on January fourteenth, twenty twenty two. We all know it takes years to build after an approval, so the length of time between should not matter. There's the electrical permit. And, um, I guess this is Skylar Peak's work truck parked outside of six seven zero one Portishead in twenty twenty two. Apparently, there have been other unscrupulously approved projects by Skylar Peak when he was on city council, such as the EIR for Bluffs Park Development on September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, and in the Wagner affidavit, David for approving his friend Richard Spurber's project that same year, which had grading variations, violations, as well as trying to block the purchase of a property at Civic Center. Here is the approval decision for six eight four seven Wildlife Drive owned by Richard Spurber, which you see the vote of three yes, two no, which shows Peak's vote made a huge difference on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised for public comment on items not currently on the agenda. If you'd like to move, close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Hey, I guess we'll close the public comments. Um, Commissioners? Vice Chair Mazza?
Uh, couple of things. I, I don't know. I think my name was used in that. I don't think I had anything to do with it, but, uh, um, last meeting we had, what, what Greg, uh, reported a, what I consider not being a lawyer, an inappropriate offer made to a planning commissioner. And, um, we got no reaction from our city attorney or anybody else. So I would like to hear from our city attorney what the city does in situations like that, um, and how they should be handled in the future.
Sure. So Chair, do you mind?
No, please.
Absolutely. So we, our office heard that. We are currently in the process of looking into it. Um, that is multifaceted. I can't really get into too many of the specifics and or details. Um, as for moving forward, the, you know, I don't want to necessarily say there's a best way to handle it. Um, reaching out to our office or Director Malika or, or Mr. City Manager is, is always an option as well, or making it known here during the, uh, during the public hearing. Um, I guess is, is also an option. So that's kind of where we stand today.
Okay. Ready, Vice Chair?
That's it.
Okay, um, Mr. Jenny, oh, uh, Commissioner Hill, you have your hand up.
Yeah, uh, whatever, or I don't, I don't, I don't, in particular, um, I don't know what, what there is I can say about what I just heard there. Nobody's talked to me about it, so I don't know. Um, two things. One, we just got today, uh, in our email, probably everybody, I'm guessing, a photograph or two of the, uh, tower at Civic Center at the college at the, the sheriff's substation. That's, it's now growing. It's the, 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 the leaves are sprouting. Uh, it's getting bigger. Um, you know, unless there's a gonna be a swimming pool under that and it's gonna be the high dive. It looks like it's set up for about three dozen potential antennas on there. So, um, I thought there was progress towards getting something more reasonable there, but it, I, I'm not sure that's happening, so it'd be good to get an update. Secondly, tonight, we don't have any rooftop decks in front of us, so I thought this would be a good moment to just, um, clarify maybe some of my concerns about them in general. And to point out that, as far as I look at it, not all decks are created equal. Some may have more impact on neighbors, some may have impact on wildlife. Um, and I've, I've raised the issue of privacy and how we have, uh, privacy laws embedded in the general plan. And privacy, in this case, with the rooftop deck, I think it's not so much about lighting because we have figured out how to control that pretty well with the ordinance. Uh, but it is about sound and presence, human presence. Sound projects further and louder when it's up on a platform, traveling unimpeded by walls or shrubbery or whatever. And privacy presence is also about line of sight, both seeing and being seen and whatever the visual equivalent of eavesdropping is. And so it seems to me, you know, we don't have a law against these, but there's a question of scale that we should be sensitive to that. Um, you know, you know, in some cases, it might be appropriate to have room for a few couples or a family to enjoy the sunset. Um, you know, maybe a hundred square feet or less versus enough area to accommodate a loud party, uh, of, you know, many dozens or a hundred. And so in terms of scale, we should be considering things analogous to viewing platforms, balconies, or widow's walks, not party and event spaces. Um, another analogy is that the building code exempts treehouses of up to sixty four square feet. I'm not saying a rooftop deck should be categorically limited to sixty four square feet, but that's one touchstone. That, um, you know, these, these, these things should be private and personal and family level and not things that can be turned into party spaces. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Jennings?
Uh, no, I don't have anything to respond to any of this.
Commissioner Peak?
Um, well, I would like to, uh, stop wasting everyone's time with coming after myself and other people that work in the construction business with the innuendo of somehow thinking that we are uh, prevented from working on a project, uh, after it's approved. And whether that project being approved by us somehow influences our decision or that our decision making is influenced by that when we have no knowledge that we will be estimating or working on a project at some point in the future. That would prevent myself as an electrical contractor, um, anybody with a legal construction consulting background or anything like that from serving and on this planning commission or on the city council. So, uh, directly in response to your comment, Joe, about the project on Porthead, I think it's super awesome of the new owner to use a local contractor like myself and others to work on the project. Um, had no knowledge that I would ever be working on that project when that was decision was approved at the city council. There are numerous other houses on Point Dune on lots that are smaller than that, that are larger than that. They may not be within that vicinity, but I think that if you have a property that's that large and you want to make a house that's that size, our code allows for it, and that's why that decision was made at that time. Um, so the fact that the project, I work for a different owner, was not the owner at the time of that. Um, had no knowledge that I would be ever asked to bid or work on that project. Um, I think it's completely ridiculous that you and other people continue to bring it up and that it's, uh, insinuated that that somehow, uh, influenced my decision to approve it. Similarly, um, I have been in this community my entire life. I know a lot of people in this community. And I have a lot of friends and acquaintances in this community, and just because somebody's a friend of mine doesn't mean that I would have to recuse myself from voting on a project when that relationship has no influence over my decision on that project. And I think it's very important that myself and everybody else that sits here or on the city council looks at the rules and laws of our municipal code, LIP, LCP, et cetera, and applies those as they see accordingly to whatever project is before them. So with that being said, I will continue to do that. And I absolutely appreciate it um, as a contractor, and I think it's smart for people to hire people that are local. So that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, well, of course, I'm gonna say amen to that. I, I, uh, I'm a contractor on the planning commission, and I'm very honored by that, and I would never step out and do anything that would hurt my being here. Um, you know, to ruin what my appointee Paul Grisante had put the faith in me to sit here with all of you and, and our fair city. So you can count on me never putting myself in that position as well. So so I think, uh, I hopefully that's, that's the last we hear about that because Skylar's not gonna do anything like that, and I'm not either. So there you go. All right. Um, Director Malika?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you very much, Chair. And tonight, um, I'm gonna allow the city, or not allow, he's my boss. I, and the city manager would like to speak. So I, I will be introducing him, and here he is, and I'll let Steve have it.
Well, thank you, Richard. I hope everybody can hear me. Uh, thank you, Chair Smith, members of the, uh, planning commission. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. I know you've got a, a long agenda, so I promise I will try to be brief. Uh, wanted to just check in. I don't usually come and speak to this group. Um, but I, I know, um, we all kind of watch what other folks are doing. Um, I think one thing I just wanted to, to, uh, to highlight for you um, is, uh, the great progress that I think we've been making, uh, in terms of, uh, just the functionality and flow and tone of our city council meetings. Uh, over the past few months, I think the city council and staff have been, uh, working really hard together uh, increasingly, uh, to, to, uh, work towards, uh, more business-like meetings, um, and more efficient. Uh, and I think as a result, we've, uh, we've been able to get a lot done, uh, and everybody is working together well. I, I don't think, uh, it's any, uh, surprise, uh, to the folks here uh, that we are struggling, uh, with just staffing in general, uh, trying to retain, uh, and, and attract, uh, you know, the good people who get the work done, uh, day to day. I think, you know, uh, and many of you do, that the staff here are really an amazing collection of dedicated professionals, and they work very, very hard here. Uh, I would just like to urge, um. Not only for the for the staff, but for the members of the commission, uh, that you really, uh. Work together as best that you can, uh, treat treat each other respectfully at all times to the best of your ability. Uh, we certainly understand that there's going to be disagreements, differences in philosophies and difference of opinions. Uh, we don't expect you to all agree, uh, we certainly do not expect you to agree with the staff all the time. Uh, and we also feel that uh your vote is your vote, uh, and that is absolutely sacred. I would like to point out to the uh plan commissioners, uh, and it might uh be good for you to take a look, I'm not going to read through it tonight. Uh, but you do have a resolution on the books, uh, it's twelve fifty-nine. Uh, it talks about planning commission decorum. Uh, it gives rules not only for the commission, but also for the staff and also for the public. Uh, so as I said, um, you know, we are working to what we can do on our, on the management side of things to address what we can to to really assist the staff. I think also hopefully to, you know, assist the city at the planning commission, the city council, in carrying out the functions to the best of their ability. I'm sure the commission is aware of the work that we're doing, uh, with the report for Baker Tilly. Uh, we should have the results on that back um in a month or so, and we're very much looking forward to the recommendations that we'll receive in that report. Um, as you know, we're working to address the short-term staffing as well as the long-term staffing needs here. Uh, we're also working to address what we know or is really a a long overdue, uh, overhaul of our. Of our I T and our permitting processes, so those are things that we are working on on our end to to hopefully make things just better for everybody all around. Uh, also wanted to note that we've got uh Brown Act training coming up at the end of the month, uh, and you're all invited to that. Uh, we're also going to just be covering some some general topics as well, just to hopefully. Um, you know, further give commissioners um the tools that they need. And um, just if there's anything that the commission feels that they need from myself or my staff that we can do to help support you in your mission. I'd be certainly, um, certainly would uh would love to hear from you uh from on that. Um, so again, I just want to thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'll turn it back over to uh to Chair Smith, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Very much. Um, Director Malika?
Yes, thank you, Chair. To respond to Commissioner Hill's inquiry about the Santa Monica College Tower. Uh, there still is a stop work order in place. Uh, we've been monitoring them to make certain that no antennas are installed and no further work unless it's safety related. On the tower. The applicant, uh. The, which is the college on behalf of the county, they have made, as I've mentioned in the past, a conditional use permit application that will be coming to this hearing. For use of the tower. To date, we've issued two incomplete letters, I I believe those are also publicly available on our website. As part of that process, we've explained to them that the color and the height of the tower needs to be addressed as well. And that uh color, it's my understanding that they are making a new application to the F A A. That would address the color and lighting. And then in terms of the height, we've given them the option of either lowering it. Uh, back to what the resolution spec'd out as the height of approval. Or the option is if they wish, they can make an application to come to this commission for a variance. Uh, to date, the county has not provided us with an application. Or an app, well, I'll say it's an application for variance or an application or materials to tell us they're lowering the height of the tower. Uh, we will continue to push on that. Uh, but uh just to reiterate. The conditional use permit that is in process will be coming to this commission, it's also appealable to the city council, so there will be a public hearing on this matter. And with that, uh, the last. Announcement that I have, and I'm looking on the screen here for Jessica, oh, there she is, Jessica Bobbitt. Is I'm very sad to say that Jessica today has filed with the city her notice. Uh, she'll be leaving us, and Jessica, I don't want to mess this up, is it Palos Verdes?
Yeah, City of Branches, Palos Verdes.
There we go, Rancho Palos Verdes, and so we will uh be losing her. Uh, however, you know, uh, there are some new faces coming to the department in terms of assistant planners. And we also are unfortunately going to be losing, uh, learned on Friday, one of our admin ladies. So we'll be working to fill those positions, uh, but Jessica, I'll let you speak, because I know you wanted to thank these guys for the experience.
Uh, yes, thank you, Richard, um, I just wanted to say, uh, now that I've worked with the City of Malibu. About eight years, actually started as an intern in twenty fourteen. Um, and I've had such an invaluable experience, and and firstly, would really like to thank Richard Malika and Adrian Fernandez. Um, for all of their mentorship, um, and really helping me grow. Uh, professionally here in the planning department and at the city, and then I just wanted also to thank the commission for all the time and. Uh, spent here, and I've learned a lot, and it's been such a valuable experience working here, so I really appreciate that and appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
We're gonna miss you, you're one of the, one of the better people the city's had, Jessica, we, um. You've been here a long time, you've got all this knowledge, it's just a shame that we're going to lose you for all the right reasons of who you are first. And, um. And what you, what you've given uh and to us all and and your hard work, so. I I, along with everyone, I'm sure I wish you all the best, you're gonna, you're gonna make them much better. Um, so, uh, I, we do, we all wish you the best.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, just to clarify, so. Uh, we have photographs that more work has been done on the tower, but a stop work order has been in place, so.
Oh, wait, 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 I thought you wanted to say something nice to. Planner Bobbitt. We can talk about work anytime, this, this woman has given eight years, almost nine years of the hard work here. And I was hoping maybe I wouldn't have to be the only one to say that she's a terrific human being, so.
Uh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you were speaking for all of us in the interest of uh collegiality and so forth, yeah, thank you, Jessica, you've done a great job. Um. Yeah, I I'm sorry, I thought, I thought that was a, we're moving on now.
I'm not.
I'm just, just, I I want to also thank Jessica for. For her work and and, um. You might want to think about it, you know, years and years ago, I thought about moving to Rancho Palos Verdes, and and it was the commute from almost anywhere that killed me, so. Keep in mind, don't, don't, don't cut all your bridges at once, depending on where you're going to be living.
Of course.
Okay. Are we good? Jessica, thank you. Very much.
Jessica.
Well, I haven't thanked you yet, uh, just, uh, I. I have other things to say, but I want to really thank you for. Trying real hard and and learning, which is the most important thing. Uh, you're not cutting all your ties with Malibu, you get Trevor in Rancho Palos Verdes. So you'll have one, one familiar face. The, uh, La Voyage.
Thank you, thank you all.
Okay.
Is Craig done?
Okay, uh.
Wait, I have other comments.
Of course you do, go ahead.
Well, I have the right to, okay, uh, first, uh, this is for Steve McClary and Richard, I guess. We have a meeting at the end of the month, which is a huge meeting, okay, it's. The motel. Okay, we've already got. Probably a foot and a half of paper on it. We also have a Brown Act meeting, and we also have. The quote. Save the way the world works. Don Schmitz meeting at the same time. And I'm wondering if. Maybe you might give us the afternoon off before all of that. And and move the Brown Act meeting or move our meeting, uh. But when you pack. A day with. More than eight or ten hours of being on Zoom. It gets tiring. Um. Yeah, the other thing on the, uh. And I, maybe you can give me a reply on that, um. We, all, this tower is something that won't go away, okay, and, uh. So we need to be kept up on it because apparently there has been some building, so if the. I know we tend to favor whatever school comes along with whatever they want to do, but, um. People are upset, and and I really hope we have not let them continue construction. And I hope it doesn't stop. Opening our city hall, our uh fi- police station. Because I assume that the helicopter has something to do with that. So that's my comments.
Okay, thank you. Um. All right, I guess. Everybody's had their say. Um, well, at this point on the consent calendar. Uh, first is is the three A, so I will, uh. Close my camera and shut the sound off and my microphone here, and I'll get out of the way.
Chair Smith?
Yes, sir.
If I may, so the consent calendar, the only time that you need to do that is if this item is pulled. If not, if no one pulls it, and we're going to approve, let me take a look here, we have one, two, three, four, five. Items on the consent calendar, we can just note that you're abstaining from A one due to a conflict. So I think the way to do it is to see what items are pulled from the consent calendar. If that is one of them, it's its own item, then of course you're right, you have to recuse yourself, but if it's not pulled, and it's one of many. That we approve, we will just note in the minutes. And in the record that you abstain from that due to your proximity, and then you can vote on the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to pull item three A two and three B one. And I would like to move. The balance of the consent calendar. Unless anybody else has something to pull.
I would second that.
Did I say three B two or three B one?
Three B two.
Uh, it'd be three.
I I heard three B one.
Yeah.
Three, three A two and three B one.
Right, yeah, that was it.
Yeah.
And we did also have a member of the public who wished to pull three A two.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, Craig second.
I second it, yeah.
Um, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Sorry, Commissioner Pete, we do need that, the audio, yep.
Yes.
And thank you so much, uh, Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then Ms. Evans, just note for the record that that Chair Smith would abstain from three A one.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna go to. I'm getting my glasses down here, sorry about that, we're going to uh to uh. Three A two?
Correct, a very quick. Correction I'd like to make, uh, I think it's. Normal for us to put the vote. When something's approved in the, in the resolution. Um. So I'd like to put the, um. Motion under, uh. We vote under. Section one. Um. M. Let's put the vote three two. Uh. Vote.
I I would second that if if need be, as a matter of process, do we need, not need to open the public hearing first?
Correct, we do, I I didn't know if there was going to be a staff report or anything like that, but yeah, before we start deliberating, we do need to open the public comment.
Can I uh call on Rebecca real quick or hand us up, uh, Rebecca?
Uh, just as a point of clarification, Patrick, the direction from the commission on the evening that we heard that project. Was for staff to bring back a resolution approving the project. So I don't believe we have a formal vote on the resolution itself yet.
That that is correct, this will be the 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 ultimate decision. I guess I'm, I will defer to the, to the wisdom of of yourself or Director Malika. On how we've treated these instances in the past, and that when we do have this direction from the planning commission. Do we typically memorialize the specific vote count, in this instance, I believe, Vice Chair Mazza said it was.
Reopen the hearing for the vote. Uh, we had a, we had a vote to. We had a vote to refer this for resolution. Purposes. That if there was no vote recorded on the original. Direction. Then you're reopening the hearing. I believe we took a vote last time to have the resolution presented us to us, if we didn't memorialize that. Then we were reopening the hearing for discussion.
I I apologize i- if I misspoke, I I I meant public comment, we do need to take public comment on the item because we pulled it from the consent calendar.
Okay, um. Commissioner Jennings? Your hand is up?
Who's hand is up?
Yours is.
Ah, thank you, uh, for a minute, everybody's screen was frozen, I was wondering whether it was me or. It was in the matrix somewhere, um, yeah, it it it's. This comes, uh, uh, this is a situation we've dealt with before. Because, um, the issue before us now, in in three A two. Is whether the resolution that's been brought back. Accurately reflects what the commission did at the last hearing. And so technically, you know, assuming there aren't any objections to the resolution, everybody could say, okay, fine, and vote, you know, all in favor of it. And then later on, you know, three years down the road, uh, somebody raises a question, so how come you voted for that project? Well, we didn't, we're just voting for the resolution, so I, it, the bottom line is it's appropriate to include the vote. In this resolution so that. The members who opposed it or who who objected to it and then point to it and say, no, no, this was the vote.
Uh, translate, do we, do we put the vote? On the uh April seventeenth meeting to direct, or do we put it on the the tonight's meeting? To approve?
Sounds like the resolution needs to be revised. To include that tally. And then we can vote.
No, I don't care one way or the other, I just, my vote recorded. Um. If if you think just changing number N, that's my motion, we uh change number.
Where is M, John, I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
The M is, uh, just the last, the meeting for May first, it's on page two of twenty-two. Of the uh resolution under recitals.
Page two of twenty-two.
Yeah, I think that would be the appropriate place to put it, I'm just, just a sentence that says that. Um, on a vote of three to two, the commission uh directed staff to bring back a motion, um. Approving the project.
Well, that would be under M, I would assume.
However, you want to label it, it doesn't matter.
Well, M is, are the prior meeting, M is tonight.
Oh, um, okay, fine, yeah, fine.
Okay, so I make a motion to put. The vote.
Hang on, uh, Vice Chair, I I apologize for for interrupting, can we, did I miss it, can we please open this up to public comment before we start deliberating and making motion?
Yeah, very well, uh, Rebecca, who do we have?
Um, for the applicant team, we have Don Schmitz, and we also have, um, Elizabeth Lynch, who is in opposition to the project. Um, let me see, I believe, Don, Don Schmitz, if you could unmute his microphone, please.
Audio check, can you hear me, gentlemen?
We can. Stability problem, or is it just me? I'm getting a sign, this is my.
You just, you just destabilized, you're in the matrix right now.
We think it's, we think it's just you.
There you go, you're you're back in motion.
Okay, you're back.
We think it's just you.
Hey, Don, if you'd like to begin?
Certainly, um, I'll keep it uh short, uh, basically, uh, I understand, um. Commissioner Mazza's uh modification to show the vote, uh, uh, of three to two, and. Uh, I agree with both him and Commissioner Jennings, it's entirely appropriate to include that in the resolution. I just want to uh reaffirm that this resolution that is before you tonight. Does accurately reflect the actions of the commission. I also wish to reemphasize that the conditions the commission wanted to see added. Uh, are in this resolution, uh, specifically, uh, consistency with the dark sky ordinance. And the modification, uh, on the archaeological monitoring, that there will be archaeological monitoring, not limited to just three feet in depth. But to the bottom of all excavations. Um, the other things which are already embedded by this commission, I will not belabor, such as the monarch habitat. The landscaping, the water quality and everything else. Uh, clearly, uh, what is before you is in fact consistent with your deliberations and your actions. Uh, I would urge that, uh, there not be, uh, uh. Uh, I would urge that, uh, there not be, uh, uh, effort to reopen this matter. Uh, as has been correctly stated by you commissioners, this is simply a hearing on whether or not this accurately reflects the actions which you took. So with that, I'll wrap it up. Thank you for your time and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Schmitz.
And our next speaker is Elizabeth Lynch. Uh, she's in the meeting under Liz Lynch.
Hello?
Yes.
Um, I'm on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I would like the commissioners to take into consideration the fact that, uh, the residence at three, one, eight, four is, uh, basically a three thousand one hundred and eighty-nine square foot residence on a sixty, a six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four foot lot. I would like you to compare it to the only other project that's been, under these same restrictions, that's been developed at three, one, eight, nine, four, which is a thousand ninety-three square foot house on a three thousand three hundred and eighty-five square foot lot. It should be noted that the three, one, eight, six, four occupies fifty percent of the parcel. And, uh, basically, the, uh, the residence at three, one, eight, nine, four is roughly thirty percent of the project. I.e., this is an overdeveloped project. And information regarding the square footage, et cetera, was gotten from, uh, Redfin as well as documents because the house has been for sale. There's been a sign out in front that the house has been sa- for sale. It has been on and off the market and the numbers have fenced all over the place. This indicates evidence that it's a spec house and not a dream house for the applicant. And I also would like to have the, make note to the commission that I just received a parcel from the coastal commission, which is huge. I just received it, it's a massive document. And I would ask the planning commission to commit, continue this hearing so that they can review this project if there is some evidence out of the coastal commission. And I would like you to reconsider the appellant's alternative to come back with a less intrusive, uh, building plan, which is more in keeping with the LCP and all the codes that cover this. Uh, thank you, and if you cared a question, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And if there are any other members of the public present who wish to speak on this item and have not signed up to do so, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none.
Okay. Back, back to us, um. I'm sure that we, this should be a short, you have a, go ahead, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, question for Attorney Donegan. Um, my understanding, and you, you can, you can correct this or check it, uh, is that we don't open a hearing at this stage, reopen the hearing uh, for further deliberations unless there is new evidence uh, in the record, being entered in the record, and I'm not sure what we just heard. Um, whether, what that was exactly, whether that qualifies as new evidence. And, um, whether we perhaps need a clarification on what that was. Um, I think we heard two things, one, uh, a new interpretation of how this parcel compares to the, the other developed parcel further to the north. And also, I don't know what that reference to coastal commission documents was, whether that, uh, may or may not be new evidence. Uh, but i- if it might be, then perhaps we should know more about it. Or what, what is the standard here about what, what it would take to, uh, relook at this?
So a- as an initial matter, tonight, we would not be able to do any of that. This wasn't noticed for a public hearing. We didn't, you know, notify everyone. I know we do have the applicant team here, so that's kind of step one. If there was, as you say, new evidence, something that came about where all of a sudden that the planning commission no longer felt that the resolution before you tonight was, you know, was appropriate, that would be directed to staff tonight, at which point staff would then look at its calendar, get with the applicant and basically renotice the hearing. Now, I will advise you, that's, you know, should really only be done in the most, I don't want to say extreme, but unique, unique circumstances, people show up, you all deliberate, you all make votes. The last thing we want is the secondary action of people always being nervous that, hey, well, they may kind of reverse course when we, when we bring that, that resolution back.
Yeah. So, okay, so I think you, you confirmed my take on it. I, I did not understand at all what the reference to coastal commission documents was about. Did anybody get that more clearly?
A big package.
Uh, quite frankly, that will be heard by city council, the coastal commission, then us again, and then the city council and then the coastal commission. So it'll have plenty of time to be heard.
Yeah, and in other words, tonight, not enough, uh, specificity to consider it as new evidence.
Okay, so can, um, Chair, or actually question for the city attorney. How do we need to make a motion for this if we're gonna add the language in there that edits, uh, part M referencing the tally of the vote on the project?
It would, it would just be a motion to approve this resolution with that modification.
Okay, I would like to make that motion.
Well, I'm gonna add, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second that with a, uh, a question and an amendment if Scott will go along with it. I, I would assume that Jeff agreed with me, it belongs in M. That's the vote we made to disapprove or approve the project and send it to resolution. And then I would assume that since Chair Smith is gonna sign this after we make this resolution, that it should also be the vote tonight should be in N.
That's fine. I don't have any objection to that. That makes complete sense and we should probably do that moving forward on anything, just so that that's kind of the process moving forward. Are we all in agreement on that?
Yes. Yes.
So I'll call the question.
So I made the motion, I'm okay with the amendments for whatever that's worth.
Thanks. Okay, so Scotters made a motion. We're ready for a vote here. I believe we're all in. Uh, Rebecca? We've lost her.
Apologies, I was muted. Um, who was the second for that motion?
Uh, John was.
Thank you. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can, before we go on, can, can I get a phone number to call in on? Because I'm, 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 I've got picture and, but the sound's breaking up a little bit, so if I can get a phone number that I could actually listen to it on, that would help me.
Alex, are you able to send that to him by email?
Um, Jeff, you actually just have to do it yourself. Um, in your mute and unmute button in the upper right corner of it, you'll see a little up carrot. And then you'll see switch to phone audio. It'll give you all the phone numbers and tell you how to connect your user and all that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much, Alex.
Okay, uh, three, B2, and then we go over to three, B. Three, one, three, two.
Three, B1, Chair Smith, we just did three, A2.
One, yes, we, yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, I don't need a staff report. Unfortunately, we cannot, we don't have the authority to give this extension. And that is because, and this has been determined by the coastal commission in a case we had on Big Rock. About a year and a half ago, it went all the way up to the coastal commission. The received date is stamped on the, on the letter. The letter was dated September 6th, two thousand twenty-two. The received date was three, eight, two thousand twenty-three. And there's two questions here. One, uh, at the top of that received date, it says, due to technical difficulty, staff was unable to download this document on three, two, twenty-three. Well, the first question is of Richard, did staff really go six days without being able to download documents? That seems pretty impossible to me.
I need to look at my calendar, but, uh, perhaps. I think I saw Tyler on the meeting.
Yeah, can you guys hear me? So I'm having some technical difficulties.
Isn't this due to the? Was it Friday? The internet died at City Hall for the, for pretty much everything, electronic submittals. Um. And, and if, because if you recall, this affected your Zumira's project, because Don Schmitz uh, provided us with apparently a revised plan that we never saw.
Yes, yes, that is correct. Uh, and, and then to couple that, uh, it was a weekend, uh, three, two, uh, looks like a Thursday. Uh, and so, you know, some of those days were weekend days.
So the answer to your question is yes, Commissioner Mazza, we have a number of internet issues, uh, one being that our submittal portal does not provide a confirmation. Um, email notification or anything like that. You, you, you blindly submit. It's actually something I was looking into today for another matter. Um, our software, we are looking at other software, but we have not purchased it, uh, which would provide some sort of confirmation. But then there was also the issue where our internet servers, uh, apparently it all stemmed from, I want to say, there was an update put into our, um, uh, mailing, our label machine up at the, the receptionist desk. And apparently, uh, that update affected our entire server and our entire network. And so folks could not work remotely. Uh, you couldn't log into the city and as well as, uh, emails, we weren't getting them, so this happened in that timeframe. Pat, if I could let you speak to our responsibilities for deadlines when that happens.
Sure, and so, you know, Vice Chair Mazza, I'm not familiar with the case or, or authority that you are citing that our stamp is the dispositive evidence of it. What I see in the, in the record, including the testimony from Director Malika, as well as in the staff report that this was received on March 2nd, twenty twenty-three, um, is obviously entirely appropriate for you all to inquire to that and say, hey, it says three, eight, what happened here? And so the technical difficulties or potential network issues on the city side in no way should, you know, uh, prejudice or impact any, you know, applicant or in this instance, uh, a CDP owner who wants to, you, who sent, who submits it for an extension.
Okay, the reason I brought those stamps up is I am now assured that the city received it on three, two. Okay? And this project expired, expired at midnight of, at the beginning of three, two. So as in the exact case we had, I, I can't, I, Joe, if Joe Drummond's still here, it went to the city council and it went to coastal commission. That you may not, you may not, under any circumstances, under the LIP and the LCP and the local coastal plan, extend an expired permit. This permit was expired on three, two. And we have we have a direct coastal commission determination of that and the project had to be resubmitted. And that's in the record. Uh, Joe Drummond's here, she could probably tell us exactly the address, but it was, it was appealed by a hack Wong who was a neighbor. And he took it all the way to the coastal commission and won. So unfortunately, uh, the applicant missed the deadline. And there is no leeway. You can't say, oh gee, you forgot. You can't say, oh gee, I, I had electronic problem. No, you certified, you got it on three, eight, and on three, eight, it was expired. And Richard, I'm sure you'll remember that. Case.
Well, I, I do remember that case and what I recall from it was that the planning director accepted an extension beyond the deadline. Uh, Pat, Pat, in this case here, we have a, an issue at City Hall, a very real issue, one this commission recalls. Uh, the Zumira's project was a, a perfect example, uh, to point to, because the commission was shocked by the plans that I want to say the, uh, Schmitz's team, uh, submitted to us on a Friday and we were unaware of it. Uh, but do you have any, I, I turned to you because I look at this one as, I think the information before the commission is that the applicant submitted to us, we could not download it.
I, I, Richard, this was my point that I just made. You certified just now that it was three, two, three, eight. Okay? You certified.
Did not say that, Commissioner.
You did, and it's stamped on the report, received, I'm quoting that. Received, was unable to download the documents on, was unable to download the documents on three, two, received, stamped in red, three, eight, planning department. That's, we just went through that. That's clear as a bell. It's also clear as a bell, you may not approve an expired, you can, may not extend an expired permit under any circumstance.
And so Chair Smith, and, and so we, we understand the, the issue here. I, I, I would advise to open it up to public comment first and then we can, we can come back to the, to this discussion.
Okay, very good. Rebecca, do we have anybody that wants to speak on this?
Um, we don't have anyone signed up in advance of the meeting. If there, if the applicant and or owner are present in the meeting, could you please identify by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen? Or if there are any other members of the public who would like to provide comment, please do so now. Uh, so I see Joe Drummond.
Oh, hi, I was just gonna give the address for that. The, the appeal to the coastal commission was two, zero, two, seven, two, in Lynn Lane, that's all.
Thank you.
Now, uh, I can make a motion to continue this while you do legal research, but if we approve this, it is, it is absolutely an invalid approval. And so you're sticking the, the applicant with something that can be called back at any moment.
It's just an extension. It's.
Not an extension, it has to do with following the law and the determination by the full coastal commission. And, and to say, gee, it's just an extension, I'm gonna ignore the law, means everything you can ignore. And that, as Mr. McClary said, we, we're supposed to have be working within a framework here. And when you just say, let's ignore the law.
And, so, damn.
Working outside of the frame.
No, no one's ignoring the law, but so, but so Vice Chair Mazza, I, I do want to be sure that we all understand, so the stamp on the, the time extension request, where it says received three, eight, twenty twenty-three, I believe we just heard testimony from the director that that was due to computer issues or network issues on the city's behalf. The staff report. Hang on, please, 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 please.
Vice Chair Mazza, let me finish.
The staff report posits, and I quote, "On March 2nd, twenty twenty-three, the applicant submitted an extension request to ensure a valid CDP permit remains in place." Now, now, once again, if you all are not convinced by that and you have the requisite number of votes, that is entirely fine. However, that is the evidence in the record from where I sit right now. The stamp due to downloading errors or network errors is not dispositive. No one's gonna look at that and say, well, just because someone, it could have been for a whole host of issues. Maybe someone took the day off, they were gone for a week, network issues. There's a million different. They were gone for a week, network issues. There's a million different reasons.
I, I just want to point out that you just made my point. I am not saying that they did not receive it on three, two. It says, you just testified yourself, Richard testified, and this document says it was received on three, two. It was expired on three, two. The day you, Patrick Donigan, said it was received, it was received. It was received, expired. Okay? That's why I asked you that first. You, you, Richard, and you and Richard have certified right now that the, the writing at the top said it was received on three, two. And you testified, yes, it was received on three, two. On three, two, it was expired. If you had received it on three, one, no problem. Okay? So you can't say, I'm going to, I don't believe that because you just said you do believe that.
But it, it, it's a, go ahead.
It has nothing to do with electronics. It has to do with when you received it.
Uh, Chair, can I ask a question of our city attorney?
You can.
Okay. So is this project, when in the verbiage of saying it was set to expire on three, two, are we saying on three, two, at, you know, twelve, zero, one AM, that that project is expired? Yes or no? Or are we saying on three, two, at eleven fifty-nine PM, the project is expired? Yes or no? I just want the clarification on that because that's sort of the deciding factor in this issue.
And, and, and so I will, I will also bring in Director Malika here. It is my understanding that it is, that is, it is the same day, just you add the years. But, but Director Malika, is that how we've treated it in the past?
That is correct. It's the day from which the permit becomes effective. There's an appeal, we would, uh, I guess the term would be tolling. If there were an appeal to it that held it up, uh, that would be added to it. Yes.
Has to do with what time of day?
But so, that's for clarification on that.
Commissioner Peak?
If, if the project was originally approved on March second, it would be effectively approved on March second at noon in the day or at, you know, one AM or at midnight.
Correct. I, I, I believe that we, we don't look back to the exact specific of the time of day, rather we give the applicant that entire day. We don't say, hey, we have to go back and look at the, the meeting and it was seven thirty-seven PM, that's when we voted on it. So in X amount of years from then, unless you get it in by seven twenty thirty-seven, it is expired. We basically give them the entire day.
That is not true. Hang on, Vice Chair. There's other people have their hand raised. Uh, Director Malika?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, to be clear, what our attorney, uh, Mr. Donigan is telling you is correct unless we put a specific times, uh, timeframe, a window ending. So for example, with appeals, we will often say end of business day. Uh, but unless it is specified with something that's specific, we do essentially the, the calendar day, the end of the day.
That is not true. Hey, now, I don't like to say that, but you have to.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair, you, you've, you've had your say here.
No, I haven't. Feel like it. Uh, yes, I do.
Okay, so, uh, I, I, John, you have to ask permission before you say. The, the issue of. I just did, and he called on me, yes. Uh, and so my point is that there is zero social utility to questioning whether or not this, how many angels can dance on the head of this pen? Uh, denying the extension sends things back to, uh, redo, which costs, which, which has no effect other than to cost everybody a lot of money. So, uh, my motion is to approve staff recommendation.
I, I would like to make a comment.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Hill first. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. My hand has been up longer than anyone's. Uh, I would like to know, we have a, a received stamp, three, eight. That's the, normally the dispositive indication, and we have a note saying that there were technical difficulties prior to that. Is there any independent affirmative evidence that they actually did submit it sooner than that? This is, this is, this is not, in my mind, not closing the loop here to just say, well, we couldn't get anything over the internet, so we're going to assume they did send it. That, I don't know, that, do we, do we have other evidence that they actually tried to send it on time?
They did send it, they did send it.
How do we know?
I can answer that question if I will be called up.
Vice Chair Maza.
If, if someone knows, please.
I am not, you, everybody is misunderstanding this and I want to be sure.
I don't think we are.
Yes, I'm saying forget three, eight, forget electronics. Is there dispositive evidence that we received it on three, two? Yes, the planning director and the assistant descending attorneys just certified that. Okay? Now that's no question about three, eight. No question, the computers went down. I asked that question to make sure I was assured by staff that it was three, two. Now, the reason why I would like to make a resolution to continue and tell our attorney researches this is there is a case on point with the coastal commission that overturned a project that had to be resubmitted because it, it, the coastal commission determined that the expiration date is the expiration date. It is not valid on the expiration date. It has expired. They determined that directly on point from Malibu on whatever day, on whatever project that Joe Drummond gave the address of. They had a vote, they directed us to reverse it and the project was denied. Okay, this is on, this is, Patrick can look it up and read it. But if you say, gee, I think what happens here is this client, this person will now never know when they can start their project because they don't know if it's legal or not. And we have a direct case on point from the full coastal commission, not their staff, after an appeal to the city council and appeal to the coastal commission by a citizen. Okay? That is written record. Now, it's not for Richard or Skylar or anybody else to say, gee, that wasn't the way it was because it is written record, the case, the project was stopped. The appeal was, the appeal was upheld. The project had expired and we were directed, you may not advance a expired project in any circumstances. Now, I think the, the applicant deserves a real legal opinion, not an off the cuff one, because this is a big deal.
I don't think there's any off the cuff anything here. We have an attorney on staff, but doing that. Uh, my thought here is, um, you know, your driver's license expires on your birthday. So if these folks got in there on the second, raced across town, however, they got it turned in on the second, it's still good on the second. Hang on, I'm speaking. So I, I just don't know why this has to be so hard on this because the city had some problems. It's happened before. We've had meetings canceled. We've had city council meetings canceled because we haven't had internet and other things that happen down there. So, um, yes, this is just a simple extension and uh, I don't see a, a, a bad situation here except for trying to stop it from having the extension. So I, uh, that's where I am. Commissioner Peak?
I just, you, you know, like in reading the fact that the decision was made on March second, right, at some point likely in the evening by the planning commission to grant that extension. If we're going to say that it's a one-year extension, a one-year extension would bring you back to that same day in the evening. So just to be fair with that, if we need to change a resolution in the future to have a timestamp on it for whatever reason we do, or if we need to change the resolution to say if in the future we're approving a one-year extension from March second and it will expire on March third, then we ought to be clear in that. But I'm in agreement that I, the way that I read it, it's completely allowable within the timestamp, within the timeframe of a year based on the fact that that decision was made on March second, twenty, twenty in the evening. I just don't get where we're. Am I, if I'm missing something there, that's, I mean, please let me know. I just don't see that.
You're not. Director Malika?
John, maybe John could make a motion rather than continuing.
Well, I, I, I just wanted to say, Skylar.
Doug, Commissioner Jennings?
Very same thing about a date. There's a year, thirty, three hundred sixty-six days and three hundred sixty-five days. Is, has been decided by the body who wrote the law and who enforces it on to, on an appeal directly to point one day. Okay, they said it expires when it expires. Okay? They did, not us.
No, no, John, you're missing the, three hundred sixty-five days is three hundred sixty-five days.
This is three hundred and sixty-six, if you want to know the difference. Okay?
Or because we have a leap year?
No, because you, you don't go from May first to May first and have three hundred sixty-five days if you count the second, May first, you have three hundred sixty-six.
But you voted on it on the evening of May second.
No, no, if you had passed a rest, they, I'll give them a month, a year and a month. Fine. It's, we passed a resolution.
I'm done splitting hairs over this.
Yeah, it's not splitting hairs, Skylar. It went to appeal. Somebody paid money to go to appeal and they won.
Okay, Vice Chair?
I get a second on my motion?
Yes.
Okay, you got an appeal coming. Why are you going to waste this guy's money?
But why do you say that all the time? You know, that's, to me.
For four meetings, we've had four appeals, that's why. Four.
You say that all the time.
Oh, go count them. You want me to list them off? I'm just saying, we violate the law, there are consequences. When our attorney.
John, nobody, we all understand your argument.
The record without checking the record is not doing us a service.
I all understand your argument.
Correct. And so, okay, so. It's a chair, if I may, Chair, I, I, I do have to, I have to respond to that. Um, everyone knows exactly what, what the issue is here is. The May, whatever we have the date, the, the permit condition states three years after issuance. It has been the ci- city's practice, what I, from my understanding, is that if it gets approved on May second, you get three years from May second. The exact record that Vice Chair Maza is referencing, I, I fortunately am unable to find right now. However, a different coastal commission report that I'm staring at right now indicates that the permit expiration was on November, basically did what we did. If it's November tenth, twenty nineteen, you get till November tenth, twenty twenty. So that is the issue before everyone. I'm not purposely violating the law, rather I'm maintaining a past city practice, one that the applicant, I believe, was likely apprised of before saying, when is my due date? And so there's a whole host of issues that, that go into that. But when people say that I am purposely violating the law, I apologize. I have to say that I, you know, I have to explain myself. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Jennings. Can we get a second, please?
I'll second.
What is the motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Grant, the one-year extension?
Yes. This is to grant the one-year extension. Uh, may we have a roll call, please, Rebecca?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
I'm sorry, John is trying to speak. Has he been muted or what's going on there?
I don't know what he's doing.
I don't know.
He appears to have muted his microphone.
Uh, I'm voting no.
Vice Chair Maza?
It's an illegal vote.
That's not an answer.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Maza, um, would you like to vote yes, no, or abstain?
I'll vote illegal.
Uh, uh, Ms. Evans, that, that refused to answer, mark him down as an, uh, abstention.
Thank you.
Patrick, what is, I'm telling you, you say.
Hey, we're in, we're in a vote, Vice Chair, and I vote yes.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, now I have a, a comment.
We're done. We're done. We're going to the next project.
On, if I'm chairman or anybody else is chairman, they can stop debate without Robert's rules of order. Is that correct, Patrick?
So, Robert's rules, no, I, who, who stopped debate?
Chair Smith did.
We just took a vote, Mr. Donigan.
Yeah, I mean, he, he, he called for a, a vote. Typically, it's been the, uh, practice of this body that we do not make formal motions to, to end debate, rather.
That is, that is counter what, to what we've been taught by the senior attorney of this city.
In, in terms of, it's been typical that this body has made a motion to end debate? Typically, it's if no one says anything, then it, it, it kind of go, it kind of proceeds.
There was no motion to end debate. That's my point.
Right, we, we. Correct. Th- th- that has been the typical practice, not only of this body, but basically every, every other body, that after a motion and second and debate has kind of, you know, processed, there's not really ever been a time where, at least I can recall, that this body has, someone's made a motion that we end debate. We then second that and vote on that, and then we vote on the actual motion. Rather, once everyone has had their say, everyone has made their comments, the chair in his chair prerogative asked Ms. Evans to, to call the vote.
Okay, so that's, that means that we no longer follow Robert's rules of order.
That's not what I said.
I said, well, that's what the fact is, and you can ask.
There we go. Thank you. Um, all right, I think we, we've got another, with this one, uh, three B two goes to May fifteenth. We have, um, this is a, uh, uh, de minimis waiver. This is a receive and file on three B three. I don't believe we have to talk about that.
We're on the, we're on. Yeah, we're on to four B.
On to four B. Zoning text amendment number twenty-one dash zero, zero, five, dash, an amendment, dash, an amendment to Title seventeen, uh, zoning of the Malibu municipal code to update regulations related to temporary use permits continued from March twentieth, twenty, twenty-three. And we have Mr. Donigan. We.
I believe it's Contract Planner Smith, if memory serves.
Yep.
Yes, that's, there he is. All right.
There he is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be giving the presentation on this, sorry. And, uh, okay, so, uh, turning back to this item, this is the second meeting on the zoning text amendment. Looking at your temporary use permit chapter. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, by way of quick background, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but this does look at amending chapter seventeen, sixty-eight. This is the section of the code that regulates temporary uses and events on non-residential property. We looked at this March twentieth of this year, uh, received a good amount of feedback from the council. Thank you. Or that feedback went back and made several updates to the ordinance that's in your packet. And so what the purpose of tonight's meeting is to request a formal recommendation to the city council. Next slide. I'll walk through the updates made just in summary. Uh, here's the sections for this code section. Uh, we did update, uh, most of the sections as reflected here. Uh, one section has been deleted. That's the application filing section and I'll, I'll note why that happened. We did add a new section, which is, uh, which is now section thirty, which is essentially the de minimis section that was referenced last meeting. Um, there is also a, a note later in the presentation regarding the director's decision timeframe in, in section oh, five, oh, which we'll look at too, and I'll be including that in the request for, for recommendation. Next slide. You can advance the slide, please. Thank you. So the updated ordinance structure reads as follows. A section twenty is now the application submittal requirements. Uh, the prior section twenty has been deleted, adding a new section thirty, which is essentially the TUP exempt section. Next slide. I'll just go through these briefly, just to touch on this. There's two, there's two attachments in your staff report. Uh, attachment B is what you see here on the right. This, this reflects all the, uh, the blue texts, everything that was added in response to the planning commission's feedback. Attachment C is the master, uh, strikeout, underlined version of the entire ordinance. And so I think just for the sake of clarity, I just wanted to walk through the changes made with respect to the next few slides here and just, uh, give a quick overview as to what was discussed and why. And this will essentially be the, the end of my presentation here. So in the first section under purpose, uh, we added language just to clarify. That the chapter extends to all non-residential zones, including commercial, institutional, and so forth. And that's the first two little edits here. And then the last one is to, uh, add protective language to emphasize the importance of considering surrounding neighborhoods. Associated with the location of these uses, and we had a, a good amount of discussion on that as well. Next slide. This is the section that was deleted. Uh, it was deleted due to, due to redundancy. Uh, we now have, uh, the current section which lays out, which is, which will be oh two oh, which lays out the specific T U P application requirements. In lieu of having to reference back to this code section, and so it was outdated and no longer applicable. Next slide. The proposed new section, which is twenty, it was previously thirty. This lays out the application's submittal requirements, and as we mentioned before, uh, this gives an applicant everything they need to know to submit a T U P application. Next slide. There was some dis- discussion about all agencies, and so we went through and made a clarification edit here just to indicate that. Um. That all agencies requirement will refer to a separate T U P checklist. That's provided by the planning department. That's a checklist that's updated from time to time to keep it relevant. It doesn't require code amendments, and so that'll be reflected there. Uh, the next section at the bottom there, under H, gets into the public noticing. Uh, we had discussion. That the planning director would be able to waive the noticing requirements for certain types of minor T U Ps. Such as events that would not include, say, food, alcohol service, uh, amplified sound. So forth. And so we added that in, and then also removed the section on the three sets of labels, since that's outdated. Next session. And next slide, please. We had some feedback notes to counsel that we, uh, reflected here, and so, uh, number one regarding the filing fee. For a T U P, uh, these would carry forward to the city council, just reflecting the planning commission's feedback that council should update the T U P schedule. With, uh, the actual time spent on T U P processing and also look at adding a planning staff position to help facilitate the processing of these applications. Next slide. Section thirty. Is the new section that was added. Again, this is, uh, we talked about a de minimis section or a T U P exempt section. This list includes city-owned parcels and parks. Which, uh, which was relocated from a different chapter. And as well as other temporary uses generally discussed by the planning commission as being de minimis. And so what we did here is, is took the liberty to go through based on planning commission's discussion and create a list. Of items that are reflective of that feedback and then also reflective of some other codes that I had, I had looked at. And so with this, uh, first section here, we have, uh, section A, which gets into, uh, discussion about. What the section is, and then also that the planning director would have the ability to evaluate uses and still require a T U P if there were special circumstances. A subsection A one, this is the language that we went through at the last meeting. It's been now updated to city-owned parcels and parks. And includes the same language that we saw before, a hundred attendees, no admission, and so forth. And then also adding the section then about compliance with any underlying use restriction on the property shall be maintained. And so that would get into. De restrictions, other use restrictions reflected on a property and so forth, and Tranqus Canyon, um, Park, Legacy Park, that type of thing. Next slide, please. Okay, subsection two gets into public events and or, uh, private events not open to the general public. So this one has to get into the discussion we had about a situation where a site has an existing authorized permit, such as a conditional use permit. And so this just makes it clear that public events operating within that permit would not need a T U P. Uh, subsection three, this is pulled in from some other codes. Generally, there is a discussion about, uh, youth-oriented fundraising and commercial activities conducted on private property. So product sales, other uses of similar conduct. We're specifically not naming what these are, and that's, uh, on purpose. But the concept's there. Uh, sec- subsection four, there was discussion, uh, the term is busking. Um, it's someone playing, say, a guitar outside of. A commercial shop. And so there was discussion about maybe we should have an allowance for very small, limited activities like that. So this is it. It's entertainment performances conducted on private property, gives the example or similar, so long as it's conducted ancillary. To other primary uses. It's not the dominant use, and also admission fee is not charged. And then lastly, uh, five here gets into non-commercial speech activity protected by the constitution and so forth. Uh, there's an example, a language here that comes from some other codes, and we've added that in. Next, uh, next slide. And the last section is a subsection B, which this is a catchall, but the, the important part about this one is this is the city's enforcement mechanism to be used. In the event there is a violation of city codes. And so title eight, title nine, those are our primary codes dealing with health and safety, noise, trash, public peace and welfare. This, uh, gives that ability to circle back and, and ensure that, uh, we have a, a catchall provision for that. Uh, that's it for this section. We can move on to the slides. Uh, section forty is, uh, temporary use permits, temporary uses requiring permit. So just indicating here, this is where the prior, uh, previously the language about the city-owned parcels and parks was found, and when that's been moved out, as we just covered. Uh, there's discussion here about, uh, limiting events on a site with multiple parcels. There was, uh, a concern shared that, a situation where there's one commercial use. That operates collectively that is made up of, say, four or five, six different parcels. Each parcel doesn't get the six sixty day limitation, and so we added in that language that was discussed. Also clarified that events, uh, occurring on the city-owned parcels and parks. Uh, are not subject to that six annual, uh, event limitation, as well as the sixty key minute a day, uh, limitation that was discussed. Now, there's also a sentence added in here, uh, reading events may occur on consecutive or non-consecutive days within the fourteen day limitation. That was something we talked about. Uh, staff had added that request as well at the last meeting. Just to help clarify that an event doesn't have to operate within the fourteen days every day consecutively, that it can break it up. Uh, next slide. Okay. Um, subsection three here, this is the one that has caused lots of confusion, uh, over the years, and we had a discussion about this as well. Uh, there was a concern to, to figure this one out, and after reading this, uh, several times. We just decided to just delete the second portion of this provision due to confusion with the way it was worded. So the takeaway is that events such as those listed here, weddings, fundraisers, retreats, Ferris festivals, concerts. Those types of things could be requested under a minor T U P. That's what the section is about. If there is a site with an existing C U P that wants to do one of these uses, we have that previously de minimis section, which makes it clear they would not require a T U P. So that's what this section's about. If there's an event that is larger in scale, it would trigger a major T U P. Under the, the other threshold, uh, components that we have. So one way or another, these uses are dealt with. Within the code, either they're exempt, they're minor, or they're major T U Ps. Uh, the prior subsection four, this is the art, cultural, educational exhibits. Uh, this is really, I think, what triggered this whole discussion. Uh, there was a request and feedback from the commission to just delete this provision. It was deleted. Uh, the discussion was to avoid singling out certain types of events and to remain content neutral. So based on other provisions in the T U P chapters proposed, these types of events may still be considered. Uh, they can be considered similar to the one above. They could be de minimis or exempt from a T U P. It may also be subject to a minor T U P or a major T U P. So just by deleting, it doesn't mean they cannot happen. It just depends where they fall now into the new buckets. So I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. Also, the proposed T U P chapter still provides this catchall provision. Under subsection B seven in this chapter, that could also be used to require a T U P if applicable. So. Uh, one way or another, there's room now for the city to understand and try to, to figure out how these uses should, that should be processed appropriately. Next slide. Okay, so, so here there was, uh, just some carryover language that we cleaned up. Uh, we just removed the six sixty day limitation. This is with respect to the temporary relocation of a. Farmer's market. That's just to be consistent with the prior discussion. Also, uh, there was language in here that was proposed. It says, in addition to T U P, a facility's use permit. Um, that's, uh, that's been updated to just be more broad in, in to read all other approvals, such as a facility's use permit. And that's intentional just because, uh, that may change from time to time, especially if there's administrative, uh, the requirements that the city has for use of parks. And then, uh, lastly here is just, uh, changing the word similar to other, uh, small discussion about that, just to help broaden that T U P requirement by the director. Next slide. Uh, two other provisions here were deleted in this section. Now, this has to. Check my notes. This has to get into the major T U P section where there used to be two existing uses that were carried over from the existing code. One about real estate sales office, rental offices, and another one about onsite, offsite, construction yards. So these, these components were deleted based on commission feedback because, uh, these are uses that are expected to be included in an otherwise, uh, development approval request. So somebody has a project coming along, these, these items need to be included in that request, and if they're not, it would require an amendment to that permits. Let's just take them out of the code. For this section. And then lastly, carrying forward that neighborhood language. Under, uh, the new section five, based on the purpose statement language that we added. Next slide. Uh, there were three feedback notes to counsel here. Uh, two straw pulls were taken. The first had to do with, um, swap meets. Which is existing code language. It says for no more than two consecutive days. Uh, there was a straw poll, poll vote taken to remove this. Uh, it was three, two in favor of keeping the provision. Um, planning commission also discussed that major T U Ps would be advanced to the top of. An agenda by an amended, uh, amended planning commission procedure if the ordinance is adopted. So I just want to reflect that here. We would circle back and make sure that's updated. In your, in your manual. And then lastly, a, uh, second straw poll vote about what the threshold should be to trigger a major T U P. Uh, through Zerasis, it came out at a thousand. It was discussed, should we reduce that to seven fifty, uh, three, two straw poll vote, keeping it a thousand? So that's, that will be reflected to the city council. Next slide. Uh, under the findings, uh, just some minor, uh, updates here, just again to reflect under finding six, this is a minor T U P finding made by the director. We just clarified the language, city-owned parcels and parks. And then also, uh, removing the sixty day limitation as discussed earlier. So just cleaning up the findings to make sure it's consistent. And, and again, these are for the minor T U Ps. Next slide. This is, and I apologize for the small font. This is the, uh, requested edit to. The resolution. This is not in the resolution that's attached to your packet, but staff would request that this be added. Uh, there is a section under, uh, sub- subsection fifty, which gets into your permits and public notice requirements. You see all the, uh, the red lines that you see here in blue. Those are the revisions to the ordinance, not based on planning commission feedback. This is what came from, uh, this racist process and presented. At the last meeting as well. We just didn't have time to really walk through all these things. Uh, one of them in particular has to do when the planning director would issue a decision on a minor T U P. Um, we, uh, we inadvertently missed the requirement for the twenty-four day item here. So we are proposing that the director would make that decision within fourteen days prior to the proposed event. So how this essentially reads is that, uh, under A one at the top. An applicant for a minor T U P would have to submit forty-five days prior to the proposed use. And then notice goes out twenty-one days prior to the event. Director makes a decision fourteen days prior to the event. And that plays into the appeal process and the appeal timing as well for a minor T U P, which is proposed at three days. As opposed to a major T U P, which follows the city's standard practice and code requirement of ten days. So anyway, that's the, that's the item there, and I would just recommend that, that get included if there's a motion on this item. Next slide. So, uh, just the remaining sections of the ordinance, we just talked a little bit about fifty and sixty. Again, uh, showed a few, few edits that were made there, minor in scope. Uh, we did run out of time at the last meeting. We didn't walk through these in, in detail. But there are several, uh, red lines that were, that came out of this races process. Again, we had three meetings with services to look through these, and so I just wanted to make sure that that's. Uh, next slide. There's, uh, two slides here based on Zerasis feedback. We really didn't get into, but it's for the sake of the process is, is important that we talk about it because they had recommended we bring this up at the planning commission. So currently, a temporary use permit has a thirty-two day public notice period. That's how the code reads today. Uh, there's a proposal to go to twenty-one days. Uh, there's, uh, the discussion was that the T U P process was initially designed to protect community and overall, uh, quality of life for its residents. Thirty-two days is the city's longest, uh, public notice period for any action, including code amendments, local coastal program amendments, conditional use permits. Uh, C D Ps, all of it. So what we're doing here is we're proposing to. Move the T U P notice period to twenty-one days, which would be commensurate with your other major actions, such as a code amendment, C U P, a variance. And then just for, uh, with respect to just. Uh, disclosure, conditional use permit, coastal development permits and site plan reviews have a ten day notice. So this would be the higher notice period. Next slide. And then we just walked through this, uh, discussion here about the, uh, other, other ordinance updates about the timeframe. So we're, we're increasing, uh, forty-five days prior to an event that gives the city. A little extra time to process these in a timely fashion, uh, adjusting that public notice period. We talked about that. There are enforcement findings that have been built into the ordinance based on this racist discussion to make sure that the site has no active violations. And that the event is subject to all other city ordinances. Again, another catchall provision. And then, as I mentioned, the appeal period, we're clarifying this. The appeal period in the existing code is, is not great. It's ambiguous. And references, uh, some wrong sections. So what we're cleaning it up to say is that the minor T U P appeal period would be three days. And major T U P appeal would remain at ten days, which is consistent with other planning commission decisions. Next slide. Um, so this is my last slide, just, um, recommend that we, uh, that you adopt this updated resolution, again, reflecting the, uh, little edit that we talked about in the red text. And recommend the city council adopt this zoning text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are we with us? Do we have any? Discussion, or are we going straight to a motion here? Oh, Vice Chair Maza?
Hang on, we need, we need question, questions for staff, public comment.
I have a comment. I knew that. I just seen if you remembered, and you did. Thank you.
Yeah, and also, uh, we did not, we ended the last meeting. At seventeen, six, eight, oh, six, oh, and made a motion to continue that until this meeting. Uh, I think it's inappropriate for us not to review that section. Um. That's where you get every other section.
Okay, let's, let's go to, let's go to public comment first, and then we can come back to that. So Rebecca, who do we have, please?
Uh, we have Joe Drummond for public comment. If there are other members of the public present in the meeting who wish to speak on the item. Please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen while Joe's providing her comments.
Hi there again. I have a question about the summer concert series on, at the lumberyard. It, would that be treated differently than the summer concert series at Vintage? Because the lumberyard is at. On city property, so they do not, no longer have to get a T U P. Is that what I'm understanding? I'm a bit confused on that. Um, I, like, from that presentation, it looked like you do not need a C T U P if you're on city property. From what I got from that, and then I guess Vintage is on their own private. Properties, so they would, I don't know, I, I know we discussed. At previous hearings on this, that there would be some kind of a series. T U P so that they weren't limited to just two in two weeks or something like that, like they could have it every summer. Um, something like that. So I'm just trying to make sure that we can have our summer concert series. Uh, that all of Malibu residents seem to love, so that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. And I don't see any other hands for public comment.
Um. Okay, that's worth kind of answering now. Director Malik, is that something you can, you could answer now?
Mic on there. Sure, I'm actually looking through to see. I want to look for our exact language. Joseph, we say parks, or did we strike that?
Yeah, it's, it's city-owned parcels and parks was the language from the last meeting.
All right, so then parcels would open up than any city property. So if this commission would like. Uh, I'm trying to think how we'd want to word it because I could see where the commission could want it for a parcel, and. I think Joe, maybe help me with the nuance here if I miss it. A city, I'll let you go.
Oh, yeah, you know, it's okay. Let, let me just clarify. So, um. So remember, there's, there's protections built into that language. So it is now city-owned. So remember, there's, there's protections built into that language, so it is now city owned parcels and parks, so yes. That includes city owned parcels. There's language built in that says so long as the number of anticipated daily attendees does not exceed one hundred. And an admission fee is not charged. So, and then compliance with any, any underlying use restriction on the property shall be maintained. So every city owned parcel is underlying uses, underlying restrictions, those are maintained. If there's an event that's, that's held on a city owned property and we know that it'll be over a hundred people. It steps up in the process, it's either a minor T U P or a major T U P depending on the event duration.
So that's automatic.
Yeah, so we just have to figure out which bucket, is it a, is it exempt, is it a minor, is it a major, and that's all based on the proposed use, and so those, those all get, have to get checked. As a request comes in.
Okay, Director Malik, I go back to you real quick.
Oh, thank you very much, Chair, I, I think that, and I hate to put words in Joe's mouth, but I think the concern. Is that that is a city owned parcel that is commercially leased. And there is a commercial operator on the site, so that may be something that this commission would want to perhaps think about. Is if it's a city owned parcel yet leased to a, 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 Pat, would the term be a concessionaire? I'm sorry, I'm going to mess that up, but leased out to a commercial entity to operate.
Term being, would you say concession, concessionaire?
Right, if they, what I'm thinking of is kind of like how the. The state puts the hands of the peer into a private entity.
Right.
Okay, Commissioner Hill?
Uh, yeah, thank you, I, I, I'm following what Richard says, that's, that makes sense. To put some kind of exclusion for commercial uses of, existing commercial uses of property. As a more broad question and about process here. We have two threads, one being to pick up with the red line that we were doing last time, I think as John mentioned. From seventeen sixty eight, zero, six, zero. Also, I have a handful of questions that are more general in nature that arose out of our last. Thing, just to sort of, I guess they're mostly bases. That either weren't covered, or I'm not sure whether they were covered, and so I don't know if we'd want to talk about those before or after we go through a red line kind of line by line process. I'm not.
We can. I'll take, I'll go in, in order right now, and then we, I guess we'll start that conversation, if that's whatever he wants to do, Commissioner Jennings? There we go.
Yeah, as far as the comments with respect to the lumberyard. Uh, when we were giving our comments at the last meeting, I think everybody was thinking in terms of. Parks and city hall and, you know, places where the public is, is ordinarily present. And those being treated in one way. But I don't see any reason why city owned property that's leased. To a commercial development should be treated any differently than every other commercial development in town, it doesn't seem that there, there should be a. Benefit or detriment to, to a property just because it's, it's the, the, the. The title holder is. The city, so I, I think that that change could be relatively easily made, but. I'll leave it to Mr. Smith to come up with the answer to that, and. She mentioned another thing which is kind of interesting, the idea of a summer concert series which we have. Talked about or touched on, but not really resolved in terms of a summer concert series. So let's just take it as a hypothetical, so a, a, a summer concert series every Friday evening. For during the months of June, July and August. It seems to me that that would. We have a hard time shoehorning that into the, into the requirements that we've got written. Is there, is that something that maybe we would want to consider? Changing by, by saying, okay, the number of, the number of days, even though it extends beyond the sixty day window. Yeah, I, I think we need to approach it in a way to say, is this, is this the kind of thing we want to encourage? And if so, figure out a way to encourage it rather than, than simply sticking to, well, these numbers are, you know, are the ones we like.
Very good, Vice Chair?
That is, the, the lumberyard has a C U P. It makes it unique, and it has very serious restrictions on its use. Especially in the summer, it's got valet requirements, et cetera, so it, it isn't really. Would, if it was considered. A normal business, it really couldn't do much, so I think we could amend that to say, you know, city owned properties excluding. Properties leased to an outside, to a private party for an excess of one year. And that would just take, take it out, if it ever goes vacant, then it's a city property again. Some version of that, so I agree with that, I've got some. Questions on what Joseph just. Said, and I'd like to ask, and then I think we should go to reviewing. Section oh, six, oh, which is very important, it's what's required.
I'm sorry, before we move ahead, maybe we want a straw poll that just memorializes, I think we have a majority at least that agrees, we, we need some commercial exclusion there.
I like that idea.
Yep.
Okay. Alright.
Commissioner Jennings?
I'm not sure what I mean asked you agree to.
I think, I think you just proposed it pretty much, so.
Yeah. Pretty much following what you said.
Okay, and then tell me then.
Commissioner Peak?
I'm good with it.
And of course. Commissioner Hill, you're good? And Vice Chair Maza?
Yep.
And I'm good, I think anything, anytime that we can all get together, which, which is really good, that we should be able to, so. Brings people together somewhere in our city, okay, so. Mr. Smith, what do you need from us on that, you, you see where we are with that, do you add, that's language that you'll add or you'll strike out from somewhere else?
Yeah, I will add a section after the city on parcels and parks, I'll do that language excluding properties. Come up with the right language and make sure the city attorney sees it.
Okay.
I get the concept.
Okay, great, alright, I guess we'll come back to us, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Hill first because he did have his hand up to, to discuss one of these.
Great, thank you, um, yeah, and I expect we'll get to the, the line by line, but just some more broad questions. And first I'll put on my pedant hat, the height of pedantry here and say. With the spelling, de minimis can have a U or an S at the end, but I think it's always a D E, not a D I at the beginning. Next, I think it might be helped, it might help for the public to understand. When a decision is the planning director's decision and when it's not. If there were some, a, a general phrase up at the head of everything that basically said in some way. They characterize in some way. These are things that the planning director decides, these are things that go to the commission. And, and then as specified below in the text with all the, the detail that we have here already. I don't know how you say that exactly, but. If there's a simple way to characterize what's the distinction between who gets what, it looks like Skylar's proposing it.
I was just gonna say that, isn't that sort of something like in the forms or questionnaire that's like. Done, where people are gonna look at that and they're gonna say, is your event over a hundred people, is your event, you know? Those like, Joseph's gonna come up with that stuff and the staff's gonna come up with that, and that's very clearly dictate which direction somebody's going. Right out the gate, am I?
Yeah, maybe that makes sense that the form itself will spell that out.
Is that correct, Joseph, or?
Yeah, that is, that is correct, there's always a checklist that adds way more detail than these ordinances. That picks those nuances.
But I think. With that being said, and I think what Craig's point is. If we can make that as simple as concise and possible, that always I think votes like, makes our policy better to have the community understand that better, so. Good point.
Yeah, thank you. Per the last presentation, the city attorney was to be reviewing whether we could limit permits to Malibu residents or to someone with a Malibu address or. That, that was a homework question, and I don't know that we got an answer in the staff report. I, I forget even who raised it, but it was, you know, somebody saying we, we wanted. I'm not necessarily even advocating it, it was just a question raised, and I, I think we never got an answer.
Patrick, I can, let me just give the lead in on it, on this one, this, this question, Commissioner Hill came from this racist process where there was. We were trying to figure out the arts, cultural, educational events, and there was talk about limiting that to certain. You know, residents or nonprofits, so that's where the question came from. And we did bring it up, we've talked to the city attorney's office about it, I know it's, it's. Been under review, but Patrick, I don't know if this is ready tonight, or if it's something we can get into at the city council, it's kind of irrelevant right now because we struck that whole section. How do you want to handle, handle that, Patrick?
That's what I mean, you know, obviously, I, I, I'm. Very jumpy at the, at the chance to opine on something that is no longer relevant. I will say in our preliminary research and review, it is definitely not a practice that I've seen anywhere in terms of in this specific context. So, you know, I can provide, you know, if, if the, if, if the city council or this, or this commission were so inclined to, to, to go that direction. You know, a further, more substantive legal opinion would have to be drafted, however. Limiting any kind of permit related to speech just on where you live is all, is obviously very problematic.
Yeah, and more broadly, I guess that. There may be other kinds of permits where there might be some virtue in. Residential favorite, favoring residents, but. I, I don't know, may, maybe you're right, maybe that's, that's too much of a constitutional question.
Well, Craig, it is done.
What?
It is done legally. In Laguna Beach, they have a pageant of the masters and the festival of masters, the city gets about eight million dollars a year out of it. The artists in the pageant of the masters and the festival must be Malibu Laguna residents. They've been doing it for. I think it's their ninety seventh year. Okay, so if we wanted to do it. Have some. A super legal opinion, it is done, has been done in a coastal city. Coastal city, it's a hundred percent coastal.
So, so maybe the notation, we don't have to just, I don't think we have to decide anything, this is for council, but to just say to council, there may be circumstances where. You know, to consider whether there's a residential preference. You, you have preferential parking in places too, that's a resident preferred kind of thing, so maybe the constitutional line is, is a little blurry there. In the interest of just kind of keeping moving through this. There was a comment in the last meeting from the film society about, does a membership constitute a fee for an event? Did we address that already or not? Do we need to?
So, you know, this could be something that is applied, it could be clarified under a checklist. You know, I think, Richard. We would need to figure out if, I mean, a membership is. It's a payment to attend an event. I think we just gotta be careful with that, Patrick, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that either.
Oh, that, 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 that's consistent with my understanding as well.
Okay, Commissioner Jennings made a good point in the last meeting that when we're, that we've been looking at T U P in isolation from special event permits. And that there was some talk of maybe. Some, putting some thought into harmonizing the different categories. Have, have, did. Joseph or anybody else, did you look at that sort of side by side again to see if there are any inconsistencies or? Ways to simplify things more?
Yeah, I, I was thinking through that, Commissioner Hill, about these two sections of the code, it's. I think for this effort. This, you know, this is my opinion, this effort, this is. This seems to be the, the best way to streamline it unless we are looking at a larger. Work bill. To really try to clarify the two. Sections, it's how Malibu has set up regulating events, not every city does it this way. Some cities have simplified it considerably. But the way our codes, the codes are written for the city, this is how it, it has literally separated residential from everything else. So I, I think at this time, it's, that's beyond the scope of what we were directed to do.
Yeah, Commissioner Jennings, is that kind of rubbing you a little, little bra still, or are you happy with that answer? Oh, you're muted.
As a matter of policy, I think it was better to do it, but I understand the practicalities of the situation.
Yeah.
Nobody asked him to do that except us, and we don't. We don't get to make those calls.
Yeah, and John, are you on this point?
Well, I, I'm sorry, really, this, this whole, this is one of the questions I was gonna ask Joseph, this. This whole section says this is just commercial. And you start going into neighborhoods and saying you can, the, the director can say, okay, you can have a. Thirty day permit to have a circus. They really cross lines, okay, they really do.
And. I heard that they were only gonna approve those on Zoom res.
What?
I said, I heard they were only gonna approve those on Zoom res.
Exactly, exactly, and the, the Christmas parade can't come down Zoom res either. Craig, you done?
No.
Go ahead.
Okay. We also raised the question of, I, the, the problem of identifying by parcel where, for example, some business has. Maybe five contiguous parcels, and so maybe there should be a definition that refers to. Contiguous parcels under common ownership as being one. Something like that, I don't think we addressed that.
We have already done that in one case, and we could copy it directly, and that is. The retail ordinance. Covers. All, all properties that are owned, we have all that language, okay, so. Those properties owned by costs are all considered one shopping center.
That's what I was thinking of.
So we could just copy that language. And. It's there.
It's in there.
It's in there, right, okay.
Well, is it, Joseph, is it the same as the retail ordinance, are we gonna have to? Parse between those two?
No, no, we, we have the language written in, it's, this has to do with the fourteen day, six events, sixty cumulative day limitations, and we, and we wrote in based on what the feedback was last meeting. Specifically that. Just lost the, of course, oh, yeah. Contiguous parcels when under common ownership sharing a related use, so those would be treated as one, you know, parcel for the sake of these codes.
But that's different than what the retail ordinance does. That's just why I bring it up.
Yeah, I, I'm not prepared to talk about the retail ordinance.
Can I, Craig, can I ask a question on this?
On that point, yeah.
You. One of your points you made, you're changing here, you said. You, you can have fourteen days. But you don't have to operate the event every day in those fourteen days. And then you, then you have a sixty day limit. You count the fourteen days against the sixty day? And then it doesn't say, or do you count the, the, whatever days they do, and that makes a huge difference because. Then you could just go block out a whole bunch of fourteen days and pick one day each.
Okay.
Two days, it doesn't seem to explain how that works.
Well, and, and I apologize that that's confusing, the, the current code section lays out how that works, so it's, it's, one event can be. Up to fourteen days, the way the code section's written, it's consecutive days, and that's caused a lot of confusion. Can you have a, have an event Monday, Wednesday, Friday? Technically, the answer is no. Because the way the language reads, but the intent was if it isn't within the fourteen days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Whatever. Now, to your point. You get six events, so yeah, six fourteen day events a year. Also, the code has a sixty cumulative day maximum. So, six events at fourteen days each is more than sixty days, so you can't do six fourteen day events. Anyway, that's, that's how the current section has been written, that's what's been applied, that would continue to be applied. Moving into this ordinance, if you need to go beyond that, it kicks up to a major TV.
Okay, so the sixty days. Is. The number of days T U Ps are issued. It's not the number of days they're actually used.
It's the number of days for the event.
Okay.
Okay, I still have a few more, a few more here. Have we adequately considered the case where somebody outside the city, like say a party of five hundred up at a house in Los Flores or Rambla or Payuma? Wants to shuttle guests to and from a parking area in the city. Um, can we say, is it the the outside of the city events? Uh, cannot park in the city. I know we don't have stand-alone parking lots. Um, but you know, if they wanna be shuttling guests to five hundred cars on the highway somewhere or. How how do we address? These these big outside the city events that wanna have a component in the city?
Well, uh, what I can, what I can share, uh, Richard, if you've got some other thoughts on this, but what comes to mind for me is. Is an event doesn't mean that it has to be. An event on the property in the sense of what we think of events. You know, using a parking lot for heightened activity. It's kind of easy to count. The anticipated number of attendees. Um, and so forth. So you know, there's there's catchall language throughout this ordinance that helps the director. You know, move a requested use around, whether it's exempt or it takes a T U P of one sort. So I think that's the response back is it's it's all circumstantial. You know, what's the event? Where is it located? What are we talking about? And then we have to make a decision from there.
So the feeling is that would be covered. John, is do you have a comment on that one?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I think the real question is. Do we wanna have events that are just parking lots?
Yeah.
Because they have to apply for the T U P in Malibu, even though they're. They're having the the, uh, pleasure fair. Up at Milken's House, okay? Uh. I think that's a bad idea. Because we're not, we're not set up, especially. With our parking situation in Malibu to provide parking for. Outside events. And our findings for T U Ps. Or whatever Richard has to find, a lot of it has to do with. What what the effect on the neighborhood is, what the effect on traffic is, et cetera, et cetera. And. That's hard to do on a split T U P. Is it, is it, would Richard be able to find it? They rent, uh, the cement lot down the street from City Hall and put. Nine hundred and ninety-nine cars on it? Um, not a thousand, that's clear cut. Uh, that's something we should decide.
Looks like Skylar has a comment.
Something, yeah, and Skylar, uh, you know, give me your comments.
Well, I just, I don't really see that. The only scenario I can kind of see that happening is in the event where somebody goes to park. A substantial amount of cars at like Zuma Beach, right? And there's a couple of events that have there that the county regulates, and then you're looking at all these film permits where oftentimes they're filming, may potentially weigh up a canyon and then they're. Using that as like base camp, but we're not really regulating any of that stuff here. And I don't really see. Like, I just, I don't see this scenario and I'm not necessarily aware of the scenario happening. Where that's gonna. Become an issue if that is something that is a concern. We ought to raise that and just tell the council, hey, we recommend that. Malibu should not be used as a parking lot for events that happen outside the city.
Or that or that a a parking.
Very simple.
We don't condone a a an event that is solely parking in the city, irrespective of whatever it's doing outside the city.
There are a lot of events. Number one, Skylar, the the county. Permits like, uh, parking at Zuma Beach. Those are county issue. Okay? And the events that. There are events that happen here and will happen with when they when they build a mound. Where you could have. Twenty-five basketball and N C A A basketball tournaments. Twenty-five games. At five thousand people each. Uh.
If if we're referencing that and we don't.
Events, the event would happen outside of Malibu.
Okay, but but. Let's move this along here. Do we want to allow parking in Malibu for off-site events or no? Yes or no?
And my my opinion would be they should be under, uh, if they're over. If the outside event is over. Thousand people, let's say. Then no, they're not allowed. Without a major T U P. Because.
I I was gonna say.
Walk in and say, it's too easy to walk in and say, I got this big event. I don't tell you what it is. But I wanna park in your 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 lot.
Well, I I was gonna say I would make the threshold significantly larger than or lower than that.
Yeah, so would I.
I would, I would go more at like a hundred vehicles.
I think that's that's a good point and then they can have a hearing.
Better policy, but I'd be curious to hear from Jeff, Dennis and Craig.
Oh, over over a hundred vehicles automatically requires a T, uh, major T U P.
Your event's not held in the city.
Sure, yeah.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, I'm just trying to take it in terms of effects. We do, uh, handle parking. Permits, uh, on a fairly regular basis. We have our the our the permits for. Uh, chili cook-off. We talked about, you know, the 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 property down there at the end of of. Below the city hall.
True.
Uh, we've had, uh, parking there. I don't see why it should be. Really any difference. Um, you you should be able to condition the parking. Uh, for all the things that affect the city, the you know, the way we have done in the past where we say, alright, you can only have. So many, you've gotta have this much brush clearance, you've gotta have. Fire engines there, or you've gotta have fire extinguishers there, or you've gotta have a guard on on site all the time.
So you don't see categorical.
And and I'm sorry, and do those things, uh, regularly.
So you don't see a categorical difference between whether the event, the main event is in the city or outside the city?
I don't know.
Well, remember, we're we're we are, Craig, we are exempting. These. They're Richard-directed T U Ps. They're not coming in like the the farmer's market had to do and go through a full C D P and the whole thing, okay? So. And and if you talk about filming, we don't regulate film parking. It is regulated by the film de office. So there's nothing other than just an event. That we're talking about. And. I would say we could say a parking T U P, I mean, a parking only event. Which would be. A parking lot for some event outside of the city. Requires. A T, a a, uh, a full-on. Hearing. Because. We don't know where they're gonna be or what they're gonna be, uh, outside of the city. You could have, well, they used to have the pleasure fair up by Malibu Lake.
But do do we care if it's out of the city?
Yeah.
Maybe Jeff makes a good point, like, we don't necessarily care what they're doing out of the city. We're more concerned about what's happening in our city, so.
Exactly what I'm saying.
Maybe the threshold is like. Is it two hundred and fifty parking spaces that then we would require? You know, like, what's the number for that? Like, I don't even know any data on events that are happening where they're parking in the city that are that amount of people.
Well. Uh, we don't because it hasn't happened yet because they're building the stadium to have it happen. Is one part of it. Okay, five thousand seats to be N C A required.
Then maybe we should revisit it at a time when it happens if we're just making laws for things that have never happened before.
Well. Then you wanna have six months of hearings over one little thing that we can fix now is. Is an event that require, if it was in the city would require the T U P? Exempt because it's out of the city? I don't think so. I mean, all these findings and everything are made about what an exempt, what the. What the. Venue is. The T, the parking is part of that, okay? When they come in to get a T U P, they have to explain where their parking is. Is it adequate? Does it have traffic control? Does it have a fire extinguisher? All this kind of stuff, but if it's out of the city, nothing.
Maybe we just use the existing thresholds that we have built into this, and if it comes in as a parking request, he processes it accordingly.
Well, that means everything up to a thousand.
So I maybe specifically for parking, do you wanna lower the threshold?
Yeah, that's better than doing nothing, because.
Do we want to, like, I mean, I I guess we don't have, we have that much parking or per many. Parking lots that have more than three hundred parking spaces.
Well, right downtown, Scotty, we got one that has fourteen acres.
Well, that's, you're correct.
And it's paved and it's private.
So my question is, what is the threshold for that?
Okay, I would say.
You can say. Hang on, hang on, gentlemen. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Oh, I, not to interrupt the discussion, I just, I just wanted to say that both minor T U Ps and major T U Ps. Include a catch-all provision. That allow the director to elevate. And there's, there's language on this for a major T U P. So I mean, there's, there's a thousand circumstances that could happen. I just wanna say that if there is something coming that's complicated. The director would have the ability to move up an event. So technically, yeah, maybe it's exempt, or maybe it's a minor T U P. Director can move an item up. Makes pretty general findings. It requires enhanced review by the public and the planning commission to make sure the event will not be detrimental to public health, safety, general welfare. To surrounding neighborhoods or to the community as a whole. So that's always going to be in the ordinance and will be used. I'm certain.
Let me ask you a question. It says it requires advanced. Blah, blah, blah from the planning commission, but I don't know anywhere where it says it has to go to the planning commission.
I think he meant to say planning director.
Oh, planning director. Well. My question would be. How would the planning director know? Why this parking was being requested? How would he know?
As he would ask. He's not, John, I don't think that any other planning director is gonna do is approving. If somebody came in tomorrow, the this ordinance is all passed, it's approved, and somebody says, hey, can I park five hundred cars in Malibu? That's like red flag, okay? We have very intelligent people. He doesn't wanna deal with that. He wants that to be a public decision.
I just wanna point out to you that on our approval list right now. There's a house in Malibu that's an acre and a half and is approved for five hundred car parking. Five hundred people parking. Okay, I just want you to know that's a fact.
As a private event.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's. That theoretically was reviewed by Richard, five hundred people.
That's totally fine. They they they've figured out and come up with a plan that is adequate for him. There's nothing wrong with that. But if. But they went through the process and did that. Now, if, like I said, if there's a threshold. That we can all agree on and feel comfortable with. If it, if the event involves five hundred cars, we want it. You know, it needs to be a major thing. We can say that, but you have to say it. We can't just attack, attack, attack. Let's come up with a solution.
I might, I'm not attacking. I'm saying. Put some limit on outside event parking outside of the city. I, you suggested two fifty. I will ask for a straw vote for two fifty, or you can make it three fifty, or you can make it a hundred, whatever number you want. I just think it's gotta be flagged. Because. We, that, we, by the way, have L I P provisions we haven't even put in here, where you can even park downtown in the summer for events. Okay?
Looks like Jeff has it.
Okay, Vice Chair, uh, Commissioner Jennings? You're muted, you're muted. Jeff, you're muted.
Me from coughing. The, uh, Mr. Smith was was trying to tell you. That there is a very flexible, uh, ordinance and and a catch-all provision. That allows the director to make a determination and move things up and down. If you, if you start creating thresholds. Where you say, okay, uh, it's two hundred and fifty cars or three hundred cars, and then it goes to a major. Um, now you've also created a a gap below that. In other words. Whereas, as proposed by by staff now. If it's ten cars and Richard sees a problem, he can elevate that to a major, uh, C U P. Uh, if you start putting in saying, okay, now it's two hundred cars to go to a major C U P. You're you're, in a way, you're at least raising the implication that Richard has been deprived of his ability to move it up. Uh, because it doesn't reach that that threshold that you put in place. You're safer to allow the language that's Mr. Smith. Gave you to take its effect and and allow the staff to move things up based upon their. Vision and and there's there's their anticipation of what's going on. Um, I I don't think it's realistic to think if. Somebody came in and said. Uh, I wanna park five hundred cars, uh, and the event is going to be off-site. Uh, and and you know, Richard's going to ask the question. He's not going to say, oh, okay, it's it's human sacrifice, right? You're gonna be doing that? No, okay, then we need to raise it to a major. I mean, the the questions are going to be asked. Richard has the discretion. To be able to to move it up to a C, a a standard C U P without regard to whether you put in a threshold or not. And I know the instinct is to say, well, we can't, we can't really rely on that. But. That's what staff does. That's what they're supposed to do and that's what they do do.
Well, I have a question of Joseph. If if we put this in. The way this ordinance reads, and you correct me if I'm wrong. Richard can take anything and make it a major T U P. If he feels like it. And. He can. Take, if somebody could come in with. Four hundred cars, uh, one hundred cars that he can make a major T U P. This, this, the reason. We wanna make this a major T U P. Is that? It's dealing with. Events that do not happen in Malibu. There's no other half of the application to judge. The use. Okay, there's traffic involved. You gotta move these cars in and out of the city. Okay? Uh, is there anything in? The proposed language here that would keep Richard? From. It doesn't change anything else in the whole thing and it doesn't. Uh, do anything other than say if it's X number of cars. You gotta treat it differently. Uh. It's cars and then. I don't know if there's anything in this section that says it takes care of. The restriction on parking in the civic center in the summers. For events. And and. I assume that this is. This is governed by the L I P. Uh. You can't just ignore the L I P provisions. So. This kinda helps that.
Is there?
Punch it a little in the summer, but. It says thou shalt not park. Public events. From what Labor Day to Memorial Day or whatever it is.
Hey, Vice Chair, we 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 understand, uh, Mr.
Oh, I didn't get an answer from Joseph.
But you're not asking a question, you're just.
I asked a question.
Yes, go ahead.
In this provision that stops Richard. Jeff just talked about, well, this makes it harder for Richard to do that or that. It doesn't change a thing other than outside parking. Is that correct?
I just need to understand. You're you're saying the proposed language is, are you talking about adding in a new threshold?
I mean, talking about adding in a new threshold for parking. For events outside of the city.
So there there are thresholds. We have the thousand attendee, for example, right? You can add in other thresholds. I think. Commissioner Jennings raised the point that. It it creates a question, what do you do when something is less than that number? Yes, Richard would have, or the director would have the catch-all provisioned or elevate anything to a major T U P. But. What if it's just under, you know, say two fifty is the number and they come with two forty-nine? Right?
You gotta pick a number.
Well, two forty-nine, but I think that if if. You know, it's, it it's a matter of practice. I I generally tend to be a little more general in the codes. So that way it gives the flexibility on the staff end to interpret these things when it, when it's in front of them. But yes, the commission has the ability to add more thresholds if if you if you desire, so that's.
Well, can I, can I get Richard to comment on this? What would happen if somebody came in and wanted to, oh, rent the Bell property? And they had a circus. Right outside of town and they were gonna run it for sixty days. Or thirty or fourteen days in a row, five times.
Can we get a more realistic hypothetical, John?
Well, that's, okay, what happens if somebody wants to have the pleasure fair? Which is realistic. It happened for twenty years. Uh, right outside of town.
I I think we need to go back to the earlier point that I believe the commission, the question came to the commission. The way the code's written right now. There is no prohibition on that. Uh, folks. We we don't have a. Eh, eh, not supporting events outside of town. So if something like that major came that we saw a problem with. Yes, we'd be elevating it. Um, however, if the commission's concern is that this is going to be a problem. Uh, I would ask that the, we make that perhaps part of the recommendation that it be included in the ordinance. That. Parking, uh, when, because people do apply for TPs that the, the SEP that Commissioner Maza, Vice Chair Maza brought up. Where they're. Parking the cars, um, on another property on Winding Way. They're, they're using the horse arena because it's. Five hundred guests and then the event's taking place on another property on Winding Way. If it's. The commission's concerned that only situations like that. Uh, occur, I think it would be good if we could put it as part of our recommendation.
Yeah, what I would recommend that we try for consensus on whatever number Skyler wants to pick. As the threshold. And just. Have it there. Richard can always still approve it. He's still just got to raise it. He's got to bring the item up, uh, rather than. You know, I don't know, for example, I don't know how you put. Two hundred and fifty cars in a horse arena, but, uh. That's neither here nor there. It's just, it, it should be addressed because. It's been announced that two hundred million dollars is going to be spent on building this arena. For five thousand seats. Okay? It's been announced. It's gonna happen, and there's other things that could happen. That's, that's my only point. Take care of it now. Don't, don't bring it all up when it happens and. It's just, it's, it's, how often does it happen? It may not happen often. It may happen every other weekend.
Okay, straw poll. Richard has the ability to elevate anything to a, a major if he sees cause. And we can say anything beyond two hundred cars automatically elevates to a major.
Of an outside event.
Of an outside, outside event.
I'd put it a different way, so we don't have outside event. I would put it. Uh, use permits. That do not involve an event. Associated with them. And that would be anything outside of the city. They would not apply for their circus or whatever it is.
I think they can figure out that language. Do, is, does that sound about right?
Uh, uh, if we're going to go with the threshold, I would go more into the three fifty number.
Go ahead.
I just want to put the caveat out there that I would tend to agree more with. Jeff on the fact that I think our planning director has the wherewithal to recognize that stuff. And. So I would like to make the recommendation to council. That while we did discuss this parking issue. That if they're comfortable with the planning director making that decision, then that's fine. And if not. Then the threshold should be three fifty. And let them decide what they want to do. And we can make that recommendation to them.
Well, if we put it in our recommendations. In the ordinance recommendations. That's what they're going to do. They're going to go through all of them and strike the ones they don't like and change the ones they do. So that's, that's the process.
And I'd be inclined not to put it in and let them figure that out.
Well, then. Can you at least? Give them the language?
I don't think we need to change anything. Why?
No, that, that's always true, uh. It, it's just.
So I would just, I would, yes, I would be willing to put an asterisk by the parking. And say that they, you know, they ought to consider that with. The challenge of. Or the potential for Pepperdine building a five thousand seat. You know, theater. How, if they have to deal with this parking thing, they ought to, you know, figure out whatever they want to do with it. I, I just, I don't, I, I don't know that that's necessarily going to be built. Who knows if they're going to raise the funding for it? They're going to obviously be adding a ton of parking on campus, yada, yada. So. A- again, I think that I'm, my gut tells me that I'm absolutely comfortable with the planning commissioner's wherewithal. And decision-making process and deciding that, and, and making the recommendation to elevate it or not.
Uh, Joseph, can you write that language in a report to the city council?
It's muted. Thanks. As I'm hearing it right now. I would be adding, it would say something like PC feedback note, like you saw in this current staff report. It would explain this discussion. And it would talk about. Uh, yeah, it would say what you just mentioned, Commissioner Peak about. You know, the director has the ability under the catch-all. If you're not comfortable with that, you could use a, I don't know, three fifty, whatever the threshold limit is. And just summarize it. A couple sentences. It's another item to send off to the council. That, that's all we're doing here anyway. I'm sorry?
If he does it that way, is it your number three fifty, Skyler?
Yes.
Do I, I asked for consensus on that? On the report to the city council, just like you said.
I think we, I think we should just say we, they can consider some number and we should move on.
Okay, but we're going to put in a consensus note.
I, I don't think we need to debate the number really.
Yeah, we don't have.
What are you going to say in the note? Gee, we talked about this, what to tell you?
He just said what he's going to say. It's, I think it's fine. They'll, they'll put in a number.
Well, I was giving Skylar the chance to put in the number, but okay. Do we have consensus on that?
I believe so.
Look, I, I think we have consensus to do what we just asked Joseph to do, which is bring it up to them.
Yeah.
The way that we.
That's what I'm asking for consensus.
So I thi- I think that there's consensus on that, you know?
Yeah. Let's move on.
Okay, I, I had one more.
I think Jeff's trying to talk about that item.
Oh.
I just, I, I'm, I'm just worried. It's nine o'clock and this can go on forever. Uh, we need to start taking a series of straw poles and get this thing out of, out of our. Out of our hair. I'm beginning to regret having moved this item in front of. Or.
Yeah. Uh, I, I just said I have one more sort of, uh, general question, comment, and I. Wondering if we want to look at that now, or do we, it's nine o'clock. Do we want to take a quick break?
Just, let's finish this item and then we can.
After, we have to finish the analysis of the last, of the findings, so we've got to move on.
Well, I'll be taking a break pretty soon regardless, so. Okay, so, uh, the, the note says that we would update the TUP fee to be commensurate with staff time spent processing TPs. But council has since requested an RFP for a fee study. And I and some others are concerned that there's. Too much emphasis on recouping the staff costs, that, that should be one factor among several. We should also be thinking about what behaviors does a given fee encourage or discourage, you know, fees and fines, create incentives and disincentives. Um, and from that council hearing, I understand that there must be some state code constraining on how fees can be structured. Involving things like cost of living increases or, you know, upper and lower bounds of what they can be. But council actually asked the staff for a citation to that code. And it was not provided to them. And so I, I think it would be helpful to understand what degree of subjectivity is built into the code. For instance, if it says shall. Does it say shall do this precise thing a certain way, or does it say? Shall consider doing this thing or take this thing into account? Um, so the, the question is, to what extent the city has any discretion in designing its fee structure? And, you know, the constitutional basis for that is pretty broad. There's a lot of leeway for what a. A government agency can do, as long as it's rational. Uh, it doesn't even have to be reasonable. As long as it's rational, it can be done. So. I think it would be, before we talk about fees, we need to talk about what the, um. What the state code is and, and what this council's going to get out of their RFP.
Craig, we don't need to do that because that's a council function. They have a fee schedule. Study every year and they change the fees.
Well, then I would, I would be, uh, want to take out the language that says what we're trying to do is update the. Fee to be commensurate with staff time spent processing TPs.
The reason you don't need to do that is they do it. It's the, and Jeff can tell you this is the way they do it because he was on there for eight years. You must have a study of what the common fees are and what your costs are, and you cannot go over. I believe it's a hundred and thirty percent of your costs. It's a very structured thing. And then the city council gives. Gives discounts for things that they like. Okay? But in this case. All we're saying is charge what it costs. The, 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 the standard fee. Because.
And I'm saying to the extent that there's any leeway or subjectivity involved that. There, there may be other factors that we would want to try to fold in.
I know, but, but they are constrained by what the law is. We don't need to discuss it here, but what, I think what we need to say here is. Charge what it takes, which is allowed by the law. There's no question about that. Okay, there's an overhead function they have too. But that is, there's no question about that. Charge what it takes, move on. We, you know, whether it's X or X, they have to do that. That's their job. We cannot do it.
Yeah, okay.
And so I think we keep that because. Part of the problem here is. When you take. Uh, uh, when you say, okay, staff needs another person, well. There's leeway. There's, there's times when it's slow. There's times when it's busy and you don't want somebody sitting around with their thumb inserted. Uh, if the, that's up to the administration to decide. Can I use this guy part-time for this? Can I use an intern for this, et cetera, et cetera? That's up to the administration, not us. So I think we can just leave it the way it is.
Agreed. I, I agree with the language that.
All right, let's, next, next thing. Let's get this moving here. The only thing that we're doing is spending too much time talking circles.
I'm going to yield on my general comments and maybe weigh in on if we do the line by line.
Okay, well, I, 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 I do believe we should move on to. I, I did have some more questions on some of this, like clarity, um. Well, I, I think we should move on to seventeen sixty-eight oh six oh because we are required to review this. We can't just say, oh, we ran out of time, we're going to skip the last section. Uh. That's what our charter is tonight. And we can go through it, only a couple pages and it's findings. It shouldn't take us that long.
Um, Chair, do you mind if I lead us through seventeen point six eight point oh six oh?
Please do.
Okay. So, uh.
Mr. Pe.
Yep.
Um, if you want to put the PowerPoint back up at the back of the PowerPoint, I do have the.
Exactly what I was asking for.
Yeah, could you bring the PowerPoint up and just skip ahead?
And you're on attachment C?
This is attachment C. Yeah, it's the master red line. So keep going down to, so. There you are. Uh, back one, right there.
Not the attachment C I have. Okay, so you're on findings, the bottom of that page?
Yeah, so, so just to clarify, the, the blue text you see here, this. Reflects the edits to the existing code. Based on Zerasis. Feedback and. Uh, the last meeting. So if you want to just start walking through these.
John, I think that that would be on page, uh, five of nine.
Yeah.
All right, we started with oh six oh, right?
Correct. So with what we see on the screen now, does, is there any objection to A? Being changed as proposed?
Okay, this, first, my first question is. Richard actually has to make findings, correct? They're written. Because this is a code that says you shall make findings. So when Richard makes a decision. He makes the finding in that decision. Is that correct?
Director Leka?
Certainly. Can you guys hear me okay? The microphone is flashing low battery. Uh, correct, like we do now. The, right now, we put in written findings, so we would continue to do that.
And that's available to the public.
Yeah, it's. Included in all of our temporary use permits.
Okay, but it's when you give notice. That's in there. You've not approved it.
I don't think that the detailed. I don't think the detailed findings may be in there, but the written notice that it's approved is in there.
Well, yeah, but. There's an appeal process. And to, in order to appeal, you need to know what the findings were. So when you give notice. I'm assuming, and maybe Patrick has to weigh in on this. That you give the findings. Well, it's like you do in a regular staff report.
So the notice would be the, the. The mailer, just like, uh, and we could use the example you're using here, Vice Chair. Just like a, a hearing, you, you send out a notice ahead of time. Uh, that just says, hey, on this date, this decision will. Occurred or is going to be occurring. And then in the actual. Document that, uh, the temporary use permit that would be issued by the director. Uh, Joseph, we said fourteen days?
Fourteen.
Four. Say that again, I'm sorry, doubled.
Yes, fourteen days.
Yes, fourteen days.
Fourteen days from what?
Prior to the event.
Yeah, so, sorry, this is a, the, the, the edit on the screen, Richard, um.
Oh, it still says thirteen.
Yeah, I need to change that.
Talk about that today.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, yeah, that needs to say fourteen.
So twenty-one days prior to the event, we'd send out a postcard saying. Hey, there's going to be event on this property. It's going to be X amount of people. These are the hours. These are the days.
But, but you haven't approved it yet, right?
Correct. I have not approved it. And then, um, the planning director shall have to re- render a decision. Fourteen days. I know we say thirteen here, but Joseph and I discussed earlier today, we put fourteen days. And in that decision is where you would find all the findings. And then, uh, if. Somebody ha- then has three days, correct, Joseph, to file an appeal. Based on that. That decision that was issued on the fourteenth day.
Yeah, well, I have a question on that and I, I did send an email in on this. If you. As I understand it, the way it reads. And we may have to read this. On the, on fourteen days prior to the event. You issue. Your TUP. And. What does the public know about it? How are they noticed?
So twenty-one days prior to the event. Properties within the, the radius area would receive a notice. Now, that notice would also give the date of, and that's what we do right now. Uh, we provide information on when the permit is going to be issued.
Always.
Correct.
They can count on. If you say, I'm going to issue it fourteen days before. But the, the way I read it, you mail this notice. Right?
On, on twenty-one days prior to the.
You don't mail anything when you make the decision. You don't say yes or no. Or. Uh, I made this decision, or I'm notifying you, I made this decision, or providing it to anybody.
Uh, we would provide, if somebody were to ask to be an interested party based off the mailing, we definitely would provide them with the document.
Okay, and do they have to be within five hundred feet?
No, anybody can be in a, in an, in interested party.
Okay, and can anybody ask for all decisions?
Isn't that a public record?
He, yes.
What I'm wondering is, I, the way I read it, the way I read it, it said, okay. Then you get three days to appeal and, and, and they mail it on that day. Well. The mail, you usually issue opinions on findings anyway, but the, the, the mail. You can't, and it says you have to appeal with all your detail in three days. Um. Not just the way we normally do it. You appeal and then you got ten days to fill out. All the objections. So it sounds to me like. Unless you go stand at City Hall. On that day and try to get a copy of it, you don't have a chance in hell of appealing. And, and it doesn't seem. Like that's adequate notice for an appeal. And I don't know whether that's. Common law, state law, city law, whatever, but. You have, if you, if you're going to appeal and you require that they. Answer all the findings. Why it shouldn't have been approved. How can they do that in that period of time?
Three days does seem really quick.
And, and. They have to get the document also. If it's issued at four thirty on a Friday night. Yeah, luck.
Is the reference to three days, is that three working days?
Well. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry. It, so the three days comes from our current code. Uh, it's a little funky the way it works, but it, it says the applicant has three days to appeal the decision. And that was taken and then applied more broadly to be the applicant or. Any member of the public, uh, because the concern was. Um, they. Joseph, help me out here if I fail on this one. I believe the idea was to keep things moving so that a hearing could be had before the event date.
That's, that's, I mean, that's the way that I read it with the, with the timeline. Because otherwise you'd have no ability to, to have a hearing before the event.
Right, and, well, you, you can under certain circumstances. You've got two weeks, but. Under a normal appeal. Under a normal appeal. The appellant has the right. To listen to a hearing. And listen to the decision. By us. That's the only, basically the appeal. In the case of. A. Written appeal that isn't in public record. Three days before you have to have a full answer to it. Seems to me. Not a very defensible thing. When somebody appeals. Four days later or whatever it is. I mean. I've tried to get stuff at city hall on four thirty at Friday. Ain't nobody there.
That's because they close at four thirty. Mr. Smith.
I know, that's because that's why they issue these, these things at four thirty.
Okay, Vice Chair, hang on. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Yeah. So just to answer Commissioner Peak's question, it's, it is three business days. That is clarified lower down in the appeals section. Um, this is referring to calendar days. Okay. That's why it doesn't say business days, but it's, it's calendar days there. The, the last thing I'll just share on this, this topic is one of the. One of the issues that, you know, this, this ordinance update was intended to. Try and resolve several issues that are happening. The timelines for the T U Ps have been problematic. Uh, in this case, minor T U Ps, these could be small events, you know, sometimes, and Richard knows this, they're, they're organized. Sort of at the end of the hour. They realize they need a T U P. They talk to the planning department. Okay, you know, they want to comply, they get everything in. It's just the timelines don't always match up. And so you have situations where. There's just a, a, a realistic nature to how much time you can build in before a minor T U P occurs. This ordinance is trying to find a balance that. Kind of weighs it all. You've got forty five days prior to the event. I know some applicants have expressed that's hard to make. We heard that in those races discussions. A twenty one day notice is the biggest notice period we have for code amendments, variances. Uh, T U Ps are being reflected in that same spirit. So there's a notice constraint. The director decision, it is intended, Commissioner Mazza, to get to your point that. The, the document is available during the notice period. If somebody has a question. On a minor T U P, they could, they could observe it and see what that is. And then there's time purposely built in for that three day appeal period. You know, and then to Richard's point, trying to get this to a hearing still. To try to. Hit the date of the event, right? It's just. It's a lot of dates matching up. And this is, this is why T P S takes so long to process is because the manage all these dates with the number of T P S the cities get. It's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of paperwork and housekeeping. So. Anyway, that's the intention behind these timeframes, of course. If you want to adjust them. And the commission wants to do that for the city council, then, then please make those recommendations, but this is.
Let me ask you this. Is the T U P. Will, is it? Is it when he issues it, when it's available? Is it going to be on? The city website available? When he issues it? Or does it come like it normally does three or four days later? And, uh.
John, I think it's, I, I, I think Richard's made it clear that it's, it's in, in the city's intention to have it published as soon as possible on the website, as soon as it's available. But we really need to move this conversation along.
This is very important. This is, you better remember, this is very important. If somebody has denied due process.
I, I, I shared, I absolutely agree with you. I think it's.
So I'm just trying to put it down.
Work back. Work back in the calendar because that's the only way that to make this work. The only reason why we're dealing with this is because it's been problematic. That's what staff has already stated. So we're looking at ways and they're proposing ways for, to make it easier.
Okay. And I'm just asking them to propose ways that make it legal. And that would be that. Somebody. For example, a regular appeal, you could go ahead and say, oh gee, there's, I gotta have appeal tomorrow morning. You could go in and throw a piece of paper at him. Does I appeal? You've got ten days to, to, to research. Here. You have three days. Find out if it happened.
Okay, let's, let's direct the, let's direct the question to the city attorney and ask him very simply. Is what is proposed adequate for the appeal process? Yes or no?
From a purely legal due process standpoint, I am content that three days is sufficient to ensure the due process of any appellant. However, if the, if the commission's. Role or prerogative was to extend that, that is entirely fine as well.
Okay, now, uh, Patrick, if, if somebody came in and said, in fact. I could not get that. In three days. It was issued Friday night. And whatever. It wasn't, I went in to get it.
Staff said they had three working days.
They have a, a. Constitutional right to review. An action taken by a director. All our other. Appeals. Have the ability to have time to answer. This one. For example, if they mailed it, there's no chance. So if it's not on the, if it's not on the. On the site. There's really no chance. Uh.
Well, we, we're, we're a pretty close knit town, so I guess if you got in your car and drove down into city hall, you'd have plenty of time. And the other thing is. This is only a five hundred foot radius. Am I not correct here? Does that still stick the five hundred square foot or the five hundred foot radius? So we're not talking about all nine thousand of us here in town that are going to rush to try and appeal something. Vice Chair Mazza, if that's what you're always talking about. So. I, I think if they really, if it's that a big a deal to them, they'll drive down to the city hall.
If they know about it. And this is appealable by anybody in the city. This is not limited to five hundred feet.
Correct.
If, all I'm saying is you tell them something's happening, you tell them what it is. And give them the right to appeal. I think when you.
Okay, so. John, I, I very much agree with you. I think everybody's in agreement with you that everybody should have that right. And our city attorney just said. They have that right.
No, he said, he said, we have the right to do that.
So the question for you is, if you don't feel that three days is enough time. Then propose something different. Let's move this along.
I propose that, that, that they have to have. Three days to appeal and. Seven days to, uh, answer the appeal questions. Because you.
So you're making it ten days.
Well, right now it's twenty. For a regular appeal.
Okay, so, so the, the challenge with doing that is that, that you have to work backwards from those days to get all the other days corrected. Am I correct on that, Joseph?
Well, yeah, and I just want to make it, make a point that this conversation actually is not the finding section. If we go down. Further to oh eight oh. That's the appeal section.
I don't think we're going to get there today if we keep going at this pace, but.
Well, that, the discussion we're having right now about adjusting the three day, what it should, what it should read is really a different section. I just.
Okay, so let's leave it like this. We have full consensus that. The appeal process seems a little bit short. Are, are we in agreement on that or no?
Yes.
No.
No? And Jeff? Jeff, yea or nay?
No.
No?
It's true.
I'm not in consensus that it's a little bit short.
I, I think three of us think it's a little bit short.
I would just, again, sort of like the last item. Just put an asterisk, like it's not the end of the world. If, if the council thinks that that's enough time, that's enough time, but. Just. I would merely put a note in there when you get to, uh, oh eight oh. Just make sure that they look at that and I'm content with that.
Yeah.
As long as we're.
I'm content with that.
Okay?
Okay, uh, and, and I hope our attorneys checked it. There's a section in our municipal code that says all decisions by the planning director are appealable. I hope it's consistent with that.
Okay, so, uh, one A. Anything else on this page that we have an issue with and specifically call it out if you do and what the proposed solution is?
So, so you're talking about down to four D?
Correct.
Okay. No, I'm fine.
Okay. Um. Great.
Yeah.
Next one.
I'm sorry, on, on, on four. Adequate temporary parking. On site or alternate locations acceptable to the director? Do, do we want to have any more specificity about? What the requirements might be about shuttles or offsite parking locations?
No. Leave that up to the planning director.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's where the, uh, inertia will be then. Move on.
Okay, um. Anything up to B? So anything on five E, six, seven, eight, nine, ten?
We don't have that. Can, can you put it up? I have something on. On.
We can go to the next slide.
Next slide.
Eight G.
We might have lost them. Okay, you have something on, what was that, John? Eight G?
Yeah. Um, what I'm wondering is. This is Patrick's question. Why is it the Los Angeles District Attorney's Office when we have a district attorney? What do they have to do with it?
In terms of the, 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 the complaints, yeah, I mean, maybe they're, yeah, that's, that's, that's a, a good point. Maybe, maybe include both.
Okay, so I would, I would hope that we have consensus that we say, or the city's district attorney. And we do have one.
And so it, it's the city prosecutor is.
Prosecutor, yeah.
Either or, is that their direction, John?
Yeah, either.
Either.
Okay. Okay, I'm good with that, Joseph?
Yeah, I just, um, Patrick, can you just? Uh. Read the statement that it should. So with the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office. What?
Or the city prosecutor's office during the twenty four months preceding the date of the application submitted.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, John, through ten?
On number nine. Uh, and this one I think is really important. It is, let's see nine. It says this, the proposed doesn't have any active violations in the city file unless otherwise considered not applicable. To the proposed use and resolve. It says facts of the code enforcement officer. Okay, well. I want to give an example, the, the car event at. Malibu Inn. Okay, they got busted twice. They paid a fine. The way this reads, they're home free. They can do it next weekend. Now, the thing that's really wrong with our, our code enforcement is it is cheaper. At present time and probably in the future. Not to ask for a T U P or C U P. It is cheaper than mailing the labels. Getting the valets, following the rules, filing the papers. Et cetera. You just violate it. Pay the fine and go on. And I think we need to say, other than. Prior T U P violations. Because if we have somebody who's a scofflaw. Who does it five or six times a year. Uh, just, just get caught. If somebody turns me in, I'll get caught. I'll pay five hundred bucks or two hundred bucks or whatever it is.
Jeff. John, I understand the point. Jeff?
Yeah, um, in soccer, uh, when you're, when you're refereeing a situation, you don't necessarily look at the. Particular foul. If a guy is habitually being, using too much force, you can card him for that. So you can put in provision. Here that gives the planning director the option of saying, this guy's a habitual offender. And, you know, there've just been too many complaints about this property, even though none of them are active now. Uh, but he's an habitual, the, uh, offender and, and we're not going to grant it on that basis.
So Patrick, can we put some language in there that specifically says any habitual offenders will not be allowed to have temporary use permits?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if that's the, the consensus and, and direction of the commission, our office can work with Mr. Smith and, and get something that effectuates that. Particularly with an I, I just want to make sure that I understand with violations of this T U P section.
Would it, would it be more workable to say, just take out the active and replace it with, within the past? Two years or whatever? They do not have any, have not had any in the past two years?
Well, we count by twelve month periods, so, uh, on, on the use. So we probably ought to keep it to twelve months. Or the prior twelve months.
Well, we had two years on, on a previous one we just talked.
Okay, but two years is fine, but.
The reason for the two years.
And when you do this is. This says code enforcement officer. Okay? It should say, and the planning director. And then this, and, and with, and it should have some language that says, with, with special emphasis on.
Okay, so let.
D U P violations.
Let's add. Code enforcement, let's add planning director in addition to code enforcement officer. If that's needed. And let's say that if there's any violations within, you know, the preceding year, that. Um, the, what are we saying? That the T U P should not be issued?
Correct.
Or, or do we want to put language in there that just says any habitual offenders should be, uh, taken with the highest scrutiny and, uh, not allowed? Because.
That gets.
Somebody might just continue to be a habitual offender and you may not resolve anything.
Well, that gets political. I think in general you should be insistent with everybody. Uh, Richard can decide how many. But at certain point.
Okay, um. Patrick, can you and Joseph work on some language that kind of gets the gist of what we just referenced?
Sure can.
Okay, great. Why is it twenty four months in the proceeding section and?
Because it takes a really long time to have something go to the, uh, city prosecutor's office and the district attorney.
And a code enforcement officer. It takes a while, yes.
So we're saying, uh, uh, only a year is suitable in this one case?
Well, I think that something that's going to come to our code enforcement and planning director is going to be in the preceding year. It's a shorter timeframe.
Yeah, true. Okay.
And, and the point is that John was saying that it's, you know, the guys are doing it last weekend and it just means you to pay the fine and then, and then do it again next week. You know, we're not talking about a long term issue here. We're talking, at least that's what John presented.
Yeah, that's good. Again, the goal is compliance.
That's good.
Um. All right, so going on to B. Anything?
Wait, 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 where are you?
Anything for the bottom half of the page, B, one, two, three, four, five, six?
No.
Okay, again, the number eight, uh, I want to add again, the city prosecutor in that language.
Yeah, next slide. Are you done on seven or eight?
Wait, wait, is that eight? No, six, I'm sorry, six, six, six.
I gotta go back a page.
Just be consistent.
Are we good with that, Joseph?
Yep.
Okay. We can stay on this page then. Uh, anything on seven or eight?
Um. I, I think on seven, you want to put the twenty four months in there, or the twelve months in there, right?
Yeah, I'll, we'll add the same language, uh, with.
Be consistent with it. Perfect.
Yep.
All right, um.
Cam, I'm taking a five minute break. So if anyone wants to join me.
Yeah, we only have two pages.
Nature calls. Sorry. Go ahead. You still have a quorum.
Okay.
We'll keep going. If that, whatever. Chair.
Yeah, keep going.
Okay, um.
Yeah.
Oh, seven oh. Let's go. A through F. John?
Uh. Okay. Oh, seven oh, A through F? Nothing.
G through L?
What through L?
G, the remainder of the page.
Nothing.
All right, can we go to the next slide? Joseph, by the way, this slide is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to technology.
Um, anything on M?
Yeah.
M is in Mary.
No.
Or Mazza.
M is in Mazza. Okay, anything on N for no?
Why don't you just ask the whole page and be faster?
Would be, okay, great. There we go. Now you're at my speed. Anything else on the page?
Nope.
Okay, um, last page. By the way, Craig is going to be completely shocked if we get through this by the time he comes back.
Yeah, we'll be gone and he'll be looking, he'll be looking at, at nothing.
Uh, anything on the last part of this, John?
I'm on one, yes, uh. And I just want to read this change here.
Oh, oh, I know is what we talked about earlier.
Okay, the question is, how much is the filing fee? I mean, these are, these are.
Great question.
With no hearing deals, uh, if they're seven hundred dollars, I think, like it is to appeal, uh, the C D P. I think that's absolutely ridiculous. This is a. Uh, one piece of sheet of paper. It's not a. It's not a.
But it does. But it does require staff time and potentially a lot.
Well, do you say, well, do you think it reply, it requires anything like anything that we ever hear? No, it's not a C D P report, it's just Richard's opinion. And, uh.
I consider Richard's opinion to be extremely valuable and his time.
Valuable, but is it equate, if somebody appealed a Malibu Inn where staff probably has a thousand hours, would it compare to this? Is it the same fee or is it?
About forty-five minutes ago, you were arguing that setting the fees is not our job, it's the city council.
No, but there's no, no, no reference to what the, what it, what it's for.
Those, those fees are. John, 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 don't we want the fees to be the job of the city council?
We want them to be different, at least in note, the, uh, given by.
Want to put a note in there that says that the fi, the appeal fee for this should reflect the amount of time it takes staff to deal with it and be consistent across the board? Or do you want to give it a specific number that you would like to suggest?
There's about eight years the city council does for you, right there.
I would like to say, I would like to have a note that city council should consider this a minor appeal and not the same fee structure as.
A full C D P appeal.
Full C D P, you know.
I think that you would find consensus on that within the commission, that we would like the fee to be reasonable.
Yeah.
Do I have, is there consensus on that, that they, there should be a note in there that the fee should be reasonable?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah.
We're just about to go to a vote on this, did we lose you for anything super important during that time?
I don't know, you tell me.
I don't think that we did, other than we just made it, uh, the recommendation that the city council, um, look at the fee and make a reasonable fee, but it should not be the same fee as a C D P appeal fee.
Uh, that's, I would agree with that.
There you go.
Amen. All right, do we need to take further action on this, or do we have the recommendations to give to council?
Do we need to?
Do we, are we going to review, uh, what they write?
No, because it, we're not going to get to the next item if we do that, but we're.
Oh, no, 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 at the next meeting, do we bring it back for, to get the final resolution, normally.
I don't know if we need to or not, Patrick?
Well, normally when we make law, we do.
Point, this is just a recommendation. Those other resolutions, when there's a chance that the planning commission is the final decision maker of the vice chair is correct, we like to take things a bit slower, we like to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. In this instance, I have confidence that my office can work with, uh, Director Malika, as well as Mr. Smith, to reflect the changes made. However, that is the, that is the prerogative of this commission, should you want to see it and have it come back, that, you can, you can direct that via the resolution here, or if not, if you have trust and faith in us, you can say, please recommend as, as amended tonight to the city council.
Uh, I just want to make one last comment, and this is.
That'll be my motion, excuse me, John, that'll be my motion.
And my second.
Okay, I just want to make one last comment, I think it's maybe wise for us to continue because the Malibu Film Society this morning announced they had a deal with Bruce Silverstein and, uh, uh, Paul Grisanti to okay, the theater. Now, even before the laws passed. So the council is obviously heading in a different direction than what we just went through. And we may want to hear what that is.
But, well, John, hold on, hold on, won't the council that's making that decision have the ability to do that when this is in front of them?
Well, we might as well, if we want to recommend, we might as well recommend what they want us, what they want recommended, rather than have a whole new thing happen. This, apparently, there's probably ten provisions in here that make that hard, what they're planning on doing.
But that's their call. We, we, all we can do, as, as Mr. Donigan said, we're just, we can recommendations.
I don't know how much more time we want to spend on this, if they want to take more time to dissect it, that's their problem.
That's their deal, we've already spent enough time here.
And, and, and the problem is that there isn't really a way that we could do this, because it's a recommendation apparently of two council members. Uh, what would we have them do, come and make a presentation of what they propose to hopefully be able to get three votes on, uh, and then we.
There's going to be a stamp?
It's.
It's going to be a.
If you want to change it, they can change it.
Yeah.
So can we get a, uh?
Can I ask a quick question before we vote?
Uh, we have to vote, we're just making a recommendation.
Well, there, there, there is a, a, a formal resolution that needs to be moved, adopted, and all these changes will be attachment A.
Okay, great.
Attachment. This obviously takes a while to become law. Okay, so if the council did an action before they adopted this ordinance, they follow the present municipal code. So in other words, taking action against the present municipal code, this has to pass the council, is that correct, and go to the, what, coastal commission?
And so, and so I, I, I am a bit reluctant to, to answer this, this hypothetical, I will only state that you are correct. The, the changes suggested here tonight, which as amended, which staff will pass on, are not existing city law right now, so yes, what, what currently exists in the municipal code sh, governs, now there's a, a myriad of potential options the city council may do, they can adopt an urgency ordinance, they can, you know, I, 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 I'm not sure exactly what it is that you are getting at, I will say though, to reiterate and answer your question directly, what you guys propose here is not good law until it is formally adopted by the, by the city council, correct?
Yeah.
Very good, so be, uh, Mr. Smith, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I, just, uh, back to clarifying the motion, just the Commissioner Jennings, so, uh, the last slide I had on there had the planning commission resolution with all the edits we brought back, plus the edits tonight. Um, there was also the language about the fourteen-day director timeline ad that we were requesting. I just want to make sure that it is all that reflected in the motion.
Yes.
That's all.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I'm sure everybody's got a, got to go somewhere for real quick, so we'll, what, take five minutes and then come back and we got just one, right?
Yep.
Chair, Chair Smith?
Yes.
I will not be returning, I have to recuse myself from that item.
Uh, uh, Vice Chair Mazza, for the record, it's just due to the proximity of your residence, correct?
I'm within, I'm within five hundred feet.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Okay, five minutes, you guys.
Uh-oh.
He most.
Can you still hear me?
Construction. Uh-oh.
Here, whenever you're ready to go.
Okay. We have I don't see Skylar yet, but.
We are also missing John, oh, that's right, never mind, we're just missing Skylar.
It's okay, you can miss John.
Don't, don't tempt us.
Ah. I'm here.
Here we go, okay, Adam, it's all yours, boss.
Okay, thank you, Chair, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my internet has been a little unstable tonight as well, so I might have to turn my, my camera off if, if that's occurring, just a heads up. Uh, but the project for you tonight is a coastal development permit, Woolsey Fire, application twenty-one dash zero zero five, located at six six four two Zemira's Drive. Next slide, please. Uh, here's just a quick look at the vicinity map. Um, the property along Zemira's Drive, uh, there previously was a house there that burned down in the Woolsey Fire. Next slide, please. There's the current site conditions, um, currently there's just, uh, a mobile home or two on there, um, waiting for, uh, the application to go through. Next slide, please. And just another look at the site conditions. Next slide. So the proposed project is a four thousand six hundred ninety-one square foot, one-story, single-family residence, uh, a two thousand six hundred and eighty-six square foot basement, seven hundred and thirty-seven square foot detached garage, a two hundred and twenty-seven square foot detached surf shack with trellis, a pickleball court, swimming ball, a swimming pool, spa, and associated equipment, onsite wastewater treatment system, landscaping and hardscaping, grading and retaining walls. Next slide, please. Uh, in addition, there is a discretionary request for a minor modification to reduce the front yard setback by no more than fifty percent. Uh, regarding this lot in particular, the allowed or, or required, uh, front yard setback would be sixty-three feet, four inches. Uh, the applicant is proposing the thirty-one feet, eight inches, meeting that threshold of fifty percent. By no more than fifty percent, I should say. Next slide, please. Here's just a quick look at the site plan, uh, with the proposed structure on the front half of the lot and, uh, rear half of the lot is mainly occupied by, uh, slope. Next slide, please. Here's just a closer look, uh, at the, uh, minor modification request. Uh, so the primary structure is located at sixty-three feet, four inches, which is required a front yard setback. And it's the accessory structure, which is the surf shack and trellis that is, uh, being placed at thirty-one feet, eight inches, uh, which is the minor mod vocation request. Next slide, please. So as you know, with any minor modification, it requires findings, and, uh, we did a quick analysis of the neighborhood to determine the front yard setbacks of the houses in the vicinity. Uh, the properties highlighted in blue were analyzed, uh, for their front yard setbacks. And you can see on the chart in the, on the right that almost half of the, uh, the, the properties that were analyzed have front yard setbacks of roughly thirty feet uh, or less. And, uh, staff felt that the findings could be made, uh, for the minor modification. Next slide, please. In addition, we wanted to do a quick P V D analysis to ensure that no views were being blocked. Uh, the two P V Ds, uh, in the area were at sixty-five hundred Zuma View Place and six seven one six, uh, Zemira's Drive. As you can see on the bottom one, six seven one six, Zemira's, that wouldn't be affected by any uh, development on the subject property, it was really relegated to the Zuma View Place, uh, P V D. Next slide, please. This is the image, uh, that would be looking directly at the subject property. As you can tell, there's, uh, a lot of vegetation in the way. And, uh, there would be no impact to the P V D with the proposed structure. Next slide, please. This is a quick look at the front and rear elevations of the proposed single-story, single-family home. Next slide, please. Uh, and in some, staff recommends the planning commission finds that the proposed project is consistent with CEQA and approves the proposed project as conditioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, disclosures. Commissioner Jennings?
None.
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, a couple, yeah, um. When we were about to hear this before, I did have some email with, uh, Planner Pusarkowicz about what kind of development is or isn't allowed in four-to-one slopes on Point Doom. And we'll talk about that, um. Also, uh, I was finally feeling better this past week, so I got up there on Wednesday and took a, a little hike out on the site and discovered that the there's a real discontinuity between the, uh, the plans, the story polls, the survey, and what's actually out there on the ground with respect to where that slope lays relative to the proposed construction. Um, so we can get into details on that, too. And other than that, I think that's all.
Hey, Commissioner Pete?
No conversation with the applicant about it, other than I did visit the the site, but I only from the the street.
Before I had none. So. We've got to go to the applicant here, right?
Yes, if you'd like to open the public hearing, public comment portion of the hearing.
Have your comment? Yes, thank you.
Our first speaker will be Doug Burge of Burge and Associates. Also available to respond to commission questions are Kayvon Tahary, who is the owner, Kaylee Ryan, project manager, and Jennifer Hopple, who is the project's architect. So. Could open for Doug.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yes, I just wanted to touch on a little bit of the staff report. I appreciate the staff for putting this all together and putting together complete presentation. Just a couple of points that I wanted to make to kind of add some color to some of the things we're talking about. Just to be clear, because of the fire rebuild nature on this property, the existing trailers that are on there actually have a permitted use, temporary use for those for those trailers, so they're just not stored on there, just to clear that up. The other thing that will come up tonight, as alluded by Mr. Hill, is that we have to start every project from a licensed surveyor who tells us exactly what the slopes are. That color code of slope analysis tells us exactly where we are. We are not over or on any four-to-one slopes, which is very critical. The other thing that'll come up is that what has to be understood is that there's flat, which people consider flat is flat, but as you get to the four-to-one slopes, obviously, something is sloping. So it may appear that maybe you don't have a proper distance, but our plans are not allowed to cheat, as you might, might, somebody might say, but we have to allude to that. We also have a very we have about half the property to work with, and we also think we have a great design, meaning we kept a neighborhood to eighteen feet, and so we wanted to be able to respect that and not have any issues with anybody's PBD, let alone the owner wanted to have a one-story house. And we have that part on the site, and we weren't able to really develop the back part because that is untouchable slopes that you can develop, as is most of Point Doom. So again, survey is the survey that tells us exactly, unless there's some evidence to the contrary, that's exactly how we designed it. We had to get the fire truck behind there. This is another house very similar in nature to its neighbor, where we did the reverse kind of floor layout where we're going behind the home to enter, so the garages are on the backside. And then as you're in the front yard is then the primary yard, because that's where the sun is, that's where the pool is. And that's where the entertaining is. And so that's why we designed it in this method. So we pushed the house as far as we can to the back, knowing that we needed twenty feet minimum to get the fire truck around there in the hammerhead. And then the garages are also set in that same position. So again, we may, one may dispute it, but again, we are standing behind our surveyor's survey. The other thing is the minor mod is just for a piece of the building. It's the surf shack. It's no more than ten feet tall. One could say that you could go to eighteen feet tall, so it's only ten feet tall, and same with the trellis, a very minor part. And also to be pointed out that the previous home that burnt down was already in the reduced front yard setback. So the previous home was in that setback. And again, it's proven by the exhibits that we're not asking for anything that is not a neighborhood standard. The other thing that came up a month ago with the previous home by neighbors that asked about construction parking that has been addressed in this report, that is the paragraph standard construction paragraph from the city. That's included. The landscape plan that was missing on the previous project is included. And our landscape plan is a hundred percent approved by the city biologist. And so there are a few new trees in there that are obviously need to be compliant trees. But as far as any grading, any other things going on in that area, there is nothing going on. So we are here to answer any questions. The owner is also here. We're excited to get this thing approved, and we're excited to have this home be built. So thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Pat Healy. If you are present in the meeting and would like to speak on the item and have not signed up in advance to do so, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Coalition for Slow Growth is asking that the condition of approval of the project. I have the applicant make the following changes so that conforms to the LCP. LIP four point three state streams are ESHA, whether they're mapped or not. LIP four point seven point two confirms that all the canyons in Point Doom are ESHA, and the canyons and streams both shall be accorded all ESHA protection. On Point Doom, new developments shall be designed to avoid encroachment on slopes. Both the irrigation plan and the non-native landscaping plan is in violation of the LIP. We question the wisdom in this instance of landscaping on slopes steeper than four-to-one, since all the residents on Point Doom that burned in the Woolsey Fire were destroyed by the fire racing up the canyon slope and igniting residents. This landscape plan greatly increases the fire risk. Slow Growth requests that this project specifically be conditioned to exclude irrigation, clearing, and planting as shown in the staff report, exhibit L three point zero and L four point zero. As an aside, the staff report doesn't include the required biological study, nor does it require the approval of fish and grain. The front yard setback includes a pickleball court and a fire pit, which is not in keeping with the neighborhood character. When passing by the project, one will see a pickleball court and a fire pit because all the front yard hedges or fences can't be under the code exceeding forty-two inch inches in height. Also, certain findings can't be made. They were, they're listed in our written correspondence. So we're not actually asking that you deny the project, but only condition the project to keep the irrigation and landscaping off the four-to-one slopes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Healy, and Doug, from the applicant team, would you care to provide rebuttal?
Yeah, just a couple pieces or clarifications. In a front yard, you can have a six-foot fence and just forty-two inches can be solid. So anything in the front yard would be in compliance in this case. And then also on the landscaping, again, the city biologist, which we we have to go by what is their interpretation of the code and their interpretation of code is what is allowing this to get our project approved. So we're standing by that also. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any raised hands, so I believe that concludes public comment.
Okay, back to us. Mr. Hill, your hands up.
Yeah, thank you. Adam, would, or I don't know who's in charge of it. Would you please put up the photograph that I submitted on the rear of the site?
Commissioner Hill, did you send that to Alex or Parker or just the one embedded in the email that you had sent?
I sent it, I sent it to you, and you said you would include it in your presentation, or you'd put it in the stack.
And let me send it over to Alex right now and put it up.
So I'll try to give some background on this. When I was looking at the section drawings, or I'm sorry, the elevation drawings, I guess they're sections. There were a couple places, sheet eight point three and three point one, where it shows the driveway edge is going over the top of the slope, which is really the top edge of that ravine. And that kind of piqued my interest, not least because we not too long ago had a similar Point Doom case where there was a driveway that hung over the ravine, a ravine. But in that case, it was cantilevered, and we decided, well, it's not touching the slope, so it's it's okay there. But in this case, there's a retaining wall proposed to be holding the driveway on that slope. So I was specifically interested in seeing what that really looked like back on the backside of the site. Do, are we close to having the picture yet? I'll just try to vampir a little till we get it.
Craig, question. Are you referencing the drawing on A three point one? Is that what I heard you say?
Sheet eight point three and three point one show the section, the elevation view. That's what piqued my interest. That's what my main point is going to be illustrated by the photograph.
Okay.
The main concern. Basically, so I went around the backside of the lot. I just approached it from the adjoining site because the the whole main, the flat part of the lot is enclosed in a fence. And on the backside of the lot, the story poles are contiguous with the backside of that fence. In other words, the corner of the house that the driveway wraps around, we call that the southeast corner. Those story poles are contiguous with the fence. The fence has, is made of a four-foot-tall rolled material on star pickets, and then the story poles extend above that. And so it's really easy to tell based on the measurement of the width of that fencing material that about eight feet away from that those story poles, there's a stump beyond which the ground slopes away precipitously. In other words, there's flat area beyond the edge of the story poles for about ten feet, not not significantly more if at all. And then beyond that, it slopes away in a way that to get down there, you would have to somebody's talking. To to get down that slope, you'd have to, oh, here, here we go. Here's the photograph. All right. So I first see on the right side, you see the story poles, and on the far left side is the the gully. You can see right contiguous with the story poles is the fencing with the rolled material and the star pickets. And so that fencing is like four-foot-high material, which by using that as a scale, you can see that the kind of gray patch is a is a cut-down stump to the at the bottom, just left of center. Do you all see that gray patch? That's that's the stump. That's about eight feet away from the the poles. Beyond that, to the left of that stump, the hillside slopes down precipitously such that to climb down it, you would actively have to grab onto bushes, or if you had a rope, you'd use that, but you're not walking down that slope beyond that stump. It's steep. So upshot here is they're trying to wrap a twenty-five, a twenty-foot width turn around the corner of those story poles, and they've got ten feet of flat before it just drops off. And I don't know if this is, you know, a problem with the survey or were the story poles not placed in the right place? You know, I can't assign the blame, but the fact is that what's on paper does not correspond to the ground out there. And I know that, you know, a common rejoinder is, well, we, you know, we, when we do the contours on the slope study, the spacing, the contours can affect how the, what numbers we perceive in the slope. Here, it's not even close. I mean, it's just whether you use a foot contour or, or, you know, fifty feet, not that you'd use fifty, but the point being that that rationale doesn't doesn't fix this. And I think this is a real problem on this site. I don't know how it arose. I don't know, and I guess it's not my job to apportion blame, but it just simply doesn't work out there.
If if I understand correctly what you're saying, Craig, if you were to look at A three point one, I think shows sort of the elevations coming down towards the rear of the property.
Yeah, you've got the, you've got a couple of those images on that show. There are different sections with the driveway extending out and showing it as extending it over a little bit of slope with a retaining wall there. The problem here is this, in reality, the slope actually peels away sooner, much sooner, and more steeply than is drawn on that plan.
So what I was asking you is that, I mean, the way that I look at this is that 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 end of that that metal pole that's sticking up that's holding that string line there?
Yeah.
Like kind of in the, not the one on the right corner, but, you know, about a quarter of the way in, kind of in line with the eucalyptus tree, where that kind of V's out there?
Yeah, you maybe you're pointing, pointing to the corner of the house, right?
Yeah, so that's kind of that that corner here where I would be looking on the sheet A three point one that I was talking about?
Yeah.
This is like foyer. You follow me?
Well, this is the, this is the driveway. It's it's further to the right of where it says foyer.
Oh, correct. But does this string line indicating the driveway or is the string line indicating the building?
The string line is indicating.
Indicating the building.
It's indicating the building.
Yeah, okay. All right. So I just wanted to make sure I was referencing the same area, so I understand what you're saying.
Right? So you need, you need twenty feet of flat hanging out beyond the string line for the driveway. And yes, they're they're suggesting that they could put a little bit of a retaining wall, but the I can't put an exact number on it, but the retaining wall that would be required to make a twenty-foot-wide driveway here would be at least twice as tall as what the drawing depicts there.
Okay.
And regardless, once we're onto the slope on Point Doom, there's no development. You can't put a retaining wall on a slope. And so I think this is really distinguishable for even even if you thought these drawings were exactly accurate. This is distinguishable from the one that we approved where we said, well, it's okay that it hangs out literally a couple feet over the slope because it's cantilevered and it's not touching the slope. That was the rationale we all came up with. Here, you know, you're actually actively putting a retaining wall on a on a four-to-one slope. So that's not, that's prohibited on point. So I mean, there are other issues with this project, ESHA concerns and setback concerns and other thoughts I have in mind, but this this right up front just seems like this calls for the back to the drawing board. I mean, unless they were to show that whoever put the, for example, put the story poles up ten feet further back than they were supposed to be, or, you know, I again, I don't know where the error is, but it's just the on-the-ground conditions don't match what we see on paper.
Okay, can, it looks like the applicant, the architect has a hand raised. Jennifer, can you, can we open her mic up?
Let's hear that.
Sorry if I titled that incorrectly. Jennifer, are you available? Are you there? Or Doug?
Max, say, I'm here. How are you?
Okay.
So again, as I said before, we have a drawing that I don't know whether it's part of the presentation or not, fairly clearly says where these four-to-one slopes are. The story poles are the edge of the building, the far pole you see with the with the far pole towards that house is the edge of the garage. There's a lot of undergrowth there. I don't know how Mr. Hill can determine. Did he have a tape measure? Was he just looking visually? He says it's eight feet away, maybe sixteen feet away.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry if you're asking me. I think that was a question. If you, the the fencing material is four-foot high, and so you can just rotate that ninety degrees to see that that's halfway to the stump, so the stump is about eight feet away.
Right. My my point is that it's not flat. It's where it turns into a four-to-one slope. Again, we have a slope analysis map with Commissioner Hill that shows exactly where this is. Now, we did talk to our structural engineers because, you know, we're not in working drawings here, but that is the edge of the driveway. Now, what we have is an opportunity because there are cases where we cannot, we've been told by the planning department, we cannot build over, even if we tried to you know, build over a four-to-one slope, even if somebody says, well, you're not touching it. That's not allowed. So we made sure that we're not on or over. Now, if we decide at this meeting Now, if we decide at this meeting that just because I can prove on a map that we're not. Even if we brought the footing back, let's say three feet. That edge of that driveway would cantilever, but it wouldn't cantilever over a four to one slope. That way you could say, hey, you're gonna backfill, you're gonna dig a footing that you're not gonna touch, not even touch. You could even put a construction fence on there. We could even put something that would protect the Esha. It's sign in an Esha in point doom, as we all know, but we're gonna call it that just for this, the the four to one slopes. So we can do a lot of these things that we've done before, but I'm just telling you, the map shows it correctly. And it's one hundred percent ask be corrected. It's licensed survey. We use them all the time. So. This is just the way it is. It may look like this, but this is the way it sits and it does work. But if we wanna, because that's a retaining at the edge of a driveway. If we want to, we can easily with with the approval of this commission. Say that the footing on that is not at that point. Let's say it's three or four feet back. So you're not digging or trenching into any part of a four to one slope, if that makes you happier.
Well, let let me, let me back up here just for a second. Ask who else on the city staff has actually gone around the backside of this and looked at the slope? Because I, to me, this is, this is a slam dunk. If if you're telling me that the. It's all about the survey and not that, you know, for example, the story poles were put in the wrong place inadvertently or whatever. Then I would have to reply that the survey is a lie. It's a graphical lie. It does not cons, I mean. When you get to the left side of that uh stump there, the slope drops away precipitously. It's not. You're not walking down the slope. At that point, you're climbing. So, you know, it's I I I I don't know who's responsible for that, but that's what I see here. That's what I walked on. That's what I experienced. Has has staff actually gone beyond this fence to actually see what's out there?
Craig, you do realize that the the area that you're talking about where the garage is there?
No, no, that's the house. The garage is, from this point of view, the garage is behind us.
Oh, got you. Okay.
Yeah.
Understood.
Right? And there's a, there's a little bit of issue over on the garage side, but it's not, it's not as as clear cut as right here. So I just. Focused on this one spot.
So what's the other, what's the other uh issue or challenge aside from this?
Oh, okay. Um, all right, let's talk about the 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 minor mod setback. Um, the prior house didn't have a driveway that wrapped around to the backside. And there was a suggestion in the staff report that the. The minor mod is needed because the driveway is wrapping wrapping around to the backside. Um, I don't know that that's necessarily a connection to make directly. It's kind of a red herring because. Because they've put the driveway around the side of the house. They have not taken advantage of the full side yard setback that they could otherwise. So in other words, if the driveway stayed on the front side of the house, the house could be wider. And further away from the street. Um, and to be clear, the 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 original house was thirty one twenty, three thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. Approximately based on an aerial interpolation. They're asking for six thousand four hundred and ninety eight square feet now, so that's over two hundred percent of of what was on the site before. So we're talking about this as a Woolsey, but it's, you know, not a like for like plus ten. It's it's over two hundred percent. And it would actually be more if you counted the the full square footage of the two thousand six hundred some square foot basement. Um, be more like two hundred and fifty percent ish. Um, so. Looking at the the minor mod, it's it's not really that minor in the front side. Uh, you could. To sort of talk about neighborhood character in an informal way, that that's not an SPR analysis, but. Um. Counting the closest properties, I know staff did a example with uh sites up and down the road. But if we count the eight closest setbacks, four four on each side of the road. And counting that we just approved a sixty five foot setback next door to this proposed thirty one foot setback. Um. The average of the eight closest setbacks is seventy three feet. There are two short ones at seventeen feet. Those are on the other side of the street. The average of just. The closest four on on the applicant's side is fifty one feet with the shortest being forty feet. So it feels like the setback here to be fitting in with the standard on that side of the street would be at least forty feet. Otherwise, we're we're now starting to crowd that part of the the turn there. Um, but again, if they weren't wrapping around to the backside of the house, they wouldn't need to be doing the the uh. The setback because they'd have more side yard setback that they could take advantage of. So that's that's a concern. Um. Uh, let's see, on on Esha. What's going on with my notes here?
I think it's important to note that I believe the Esha consideration on point two is no longer there. Is that?
Uh, it, well, no, it's it's more complicated that. There's several issues. Basically. Esha on point doom, we talk about four to one slopes instead of Esha, instead of Esha, right? But um. Trying to find the code sections here. Uh, LIP four point seven two basically equates those four to one slopes with Esha and says that. They should be treated presumptively as Esha. Um. And we have, then if we're talking about Esha, we have that language that we ran into at our last meeting where you need to be setting it. Back to the maximum extent feasible. Clearly, we haven't done that, um, although. Uh, we we we.
I don't think that that's the clear and that's the direct interpretation that many people have gone along with on point doom for a long time.
Um, well, it it's it's four to one. You have to treat it as Esha in terms of what you can and can't plant in it.
Very much understand not touching the four to one slope.
Yeah, right. Okay. So we've got that there. Um. We have. One of the, one of the problems here is that. And I, Adam and I tried to discuss this a little bit. Um. There's a difference between when you've got that four to one, there's a difference between the city biologist telling you what are native plants that you can put in a landscaping plan. With irrigation, which is development. Versus what you could put on a four to one slope here that's, you know, we'll call it quasi Esha. Which if you wanted to be planting things out there, you'd be doing in effect a restoration plan. And if you're doing restoration rather than landscaping here, you would not necessarily be putting. Tall trees like oaks or uh sycamores that are are native and grow other places in Malibu, but were not commonly found. Right here on this part of the point. So. That raises, that that leads into concerns about fire. And, you know, this particular spot, other other houses on the street didn't burn, but this one, because of the way it's situated next to the gully and. The way that that slope is aligned with the prevailing direction of the Santa Ana winds. It just came straight up that slope right up at this house. So it just seems like as a matter of prudence, you wanna, wouldn't want to be putting a lot of tall trees on that slope. You want to be minimizing any planting. Um. And similarly, I don't know that this is more a question of policy and not so much law, but. The we have from the street to the driveway about a hundred and fifty feet. And fire code says that normally, when you have more than one house, you need a hammerhead. At anything over a hundred and fifty feet. And here, they they say when it's only one house, then it's up to the officials discretion whether to put a hammerhead. And um Doug did refer to there being a hammerhead in the back, but. The standard dimension of hammerhead is seventy feet along one length, along the sort of the dual handled, the the dual headed part of the hammer. Is seventy feet. And what we have here on the driveway as that width is about forty feet. So it's not really a proper fire department turnaround. And I don't think they. They didn't require it because it's it's a single house and they had the discretion not to put it in there. But as a matter of. You know, just prudence, it it seems like they're really pushing the limit there with a house that's backed up against a gully that is, you know, clearly. In line with uh the Santa Ana fire situation. So. That that, you know, that's a touchy thing and we could, we could argue about where, how significant that is, but I'm I'm still stuck back at the um. The way the hillside lays there under the plan. It just, it does not fit.
Can I ask a question of Richard in regards to the four to one slope? My question is. Has it been policy to regularly allow irrigation and planting on a four to one slope on point doom? Yes or no?
Yes, my understanding is that, yes.
That we have been allowing irrigation and planting on the four to one slope on point two?
We have only with the use of native species. And natives to this area, not because I know we've had this problem before, not Northern California, but local plants.
Okay. So if I was gonna go natives to this area, I'm looking at point doom is basically a grassland where nothing other than that and maybe a coreopsis. Is that what shall be planted? Uh, and that's based on the. Beautiful photos that are sitting right behind me, my desk right here, but we're gonna keep those blurred.
Right? A lot, a lot of trees have grown up over the point over the last, you know, almost a century because there is runoff and irrigation and. You know, it's become sort of an artificial environment, but it isn't.
Quite interesting to see how some of the streams that even in the dry season have been dry are wet. And I would have to think that that might have something to do with the amount of irrigation that goes on upstream. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know, because I'm not a and water engineer, but just inclination. In any event, um, if it's been common practice to allow. Some irrigation and those native plantings in that area, I would see it hard fit to say all of a sudden now you can't do it. If that's what's been allowed. And uh, just for my own sake, I might consider doing some planting on my own four to one slope. Of course, with an improved landscape plan, although I think right now down there, the only thing that grows is the grass that I was referencing and maybe some cactus.
And I should, I should add on that subject that plans, some of the pages show what looks like a stairway or a a. Developed pathway that goes to kind of, I think, a remote patio or something down near the stream.
I was gonna actually ask a question about that.
That's a drainage device. That's a drainage.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, that's what I, that's what it looks like to me.
You gotta put a dissipator down there to catch all the water.
As you're in the ASBS and it can't go off.
That's a dissipator. All right.
But dissipator. Um, in regards to the question about the fire department, I mean. Was this, Adam, was this not approved by the fire department? They obviously had clear look at these plans and the purview to say. They could add something else. But they didn't and they approved.
It it was approved. I'm just pulling up the approvals so I can have the exact um language in front of me here.
Technically, it's approvable. It's just really borderline.
Yeah, but I think only that that's not our purview. That's the fire department's.
Yeah.
Um, I know that Doug has a beautiful flashing hand and he probably wants to add something along those lines because that's when I saw it go up. Did you want to add something, Doug?
Yes, hi. Let me just ask the clarification. Yes, Commissioner Hill, I mentioned hammerhead. I mentioned saying um, that's an access for them around the house. The way the role works with the fire department is that if you can prove that you have a three hit, a maximum three hundred foot spur from the. Public way, which is the street, which is what we have, and we show have on a fire department approved plan. Then you get out of your truck and you can walk back some a hundred and fifty feet in one direction. And then if your truck is staged on the street, a hundred and fifty feet from that other direction around all structures. Then you comply with the walk around five foot open to the sky, three hundred feet max. Distance to where the fire truck would then back out. So we don't need a hammerhead or a turnaround on this property. And we were careful to design the project accordingly. That was the first thing we figured out when we did this design. So that clears that up, hopefully. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, but you know, to to my mind, again, this is, this is all like deck chairs on the Titanic compared to that, the terrain back there. It just doesn't work.
I was gonna ask a question of Patrick. So. And I don't, or Dennis or Jeff for that matter is. I very much understand from the photo what Craig is bringing up. In regards to the four to one slope situation and the driveway based, I thought that the photo was from the garage. So I was like. Hey, that's the road's not right there. But how do we clarify that um in this? Situation, if it was something where like, hey, can we go look at that? We get, I'm not gonna, you know. I mean, how is that ver, how or how are those? Story poles verified in regards to the location and the slope four to ones, meeting the four to one slope stuff on point two?
Yeah, you know, as you know, uh, Commissioner Peak, they they've got to find a benchmark out in the street, then they start their measurements. So they they go through and they they plot all the things that that Mr. Birds has given them. Because he draws up the 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 storyboard plan, right? And then they 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 take their information and then they plot it throughout the lot with setbacks and all that. So what you end up with is a verified plan. Where the poles are that fit the lot the way that it is. They have, that has to be certified. You can't, it's not just like. Not like. Mr. Hill or Commissioner Hill had mentioned it's a, it's a lie. That was a pretty strong statement. I'm. Sure, hang on. I'm pretty sure that was, it wasn't needed. However. When survey goes out there, they're licensed. This isn't taking the stump and figuring out where it is eight feet. Now, what makes this bad as far as I'm concerned is the homeowner didn't have the wherewithal to clean this. The guys went out with the story poles. That was, that's not very far as I'm concerned. However. Um, we do have them in a place that there are states that says where they go. And this is how the house is set up. And if the house had this setback originally. Um, this is what they're doing. If they want their garage in the back, Commissioner Hill, they can put their garage in the back. They've made all this, the fire department has, it works for them with a hundred and fifty foot hose laid that that Mr. Birds just described. There's nothing wrong with this. So it is, it's set where the house goes. However, I'm looking at the gradient lines here and they don't seem to fall off quite as quick as you're saying, but with all that growth. You know, it's hard to say how far, how it falls off. However, this is set up and verified and it has to be that way. And nobody, nobody makes these things up. It's that house is set where it's set.
I I understand all that. Let me just say if 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 it's about the story poles, maybe something happened like, for example. They were supposed to have measured from the edge of the street and instead they measured from the edge of the easement. And and that would, that would potentially re- yield a result, putting the story poles ten feet closer to the cliff than they should be.
But the story, the story posts just don't go willy nilly. They go right where the pin is. To the skate.
Right. And and I agree, generally, that's the case. And if that is indeed.
It's always the case.
Then I stand by my assertion, therefore, that the. Survey is a graphical lie. It is, does not correspond to the land out there. It's just wrong. I I I was, the brush didn't occlude me from seeing and looking down and seeing. I could not, it's not anything you could walk down. It it's steep. You have to climb down that. It's just, you know, I I'm not, I'm not selling a product here or something. I just went out and saw what's there.
I don't, look, no one's disputing what you saw. If that's what you saw, that's what you saw. I just was, I, Dennis, what I was going to ask is, how are we assured that? Like, I wanna, I I wanna support this project. I think that they designed a very good project here. I just want to be able to assure that we're not encroaching into that four in one slope. And what I'm asking is like, what mechanism or anything? Do we have here to do that? That's all really what my question is.
You have a, you have, you have a letter from the, from a uh licensed surveyor that says this is where the house goes and this is the measurements to get it there. It's like you and I, we have to give guarantees. You and I have a guarantee. I've got one on structural for ten years, right? So that we have things that we have to live by, right or wrong. But this, this, this is people work with those itty bitty numbers. And I joke to them all the time. If you make it an eighth or a quarter, it'd be a lot easier. However, these are small numbers that these men and women work with to make this stuff. So it's right where it's supposed to go. There's not, the poles are next to the stake, next to the pin. That's, they they don't just come out and and off. That's, they, they don't just come out and, and offset or, or move. That's where it sets.
Dennis, I, I understand you understand the process and the law and the rules and everything perfectly well. And I agree, that's how it should be. That's how it should be. You haven't been out on the site. You have not seen what's actually there. It's just not, it's not what's on paper. I, I, I don't want to argue about it any further. I think I've made my point, you know? So.
I believe I made mine.
Jeff?
You're muted.
So we usually have a color coded slope analysis and I'm looking at sheet one, which is the only thing I've got that kind of looks like it might be that. Everything I've got on the, the set of plans that we were given is in black and white. There isn't much of a coded, uh, color coded analysis.
This is the one, this is the one where, isn't it where they said, uh, yeah, we said black and white and, and if you want a color one, we'll, we'll get you one. I'm looking, I'm looking at the color on the PDF.
Is there, excuse me, is there a staff, is there a color coded, uh, version that you can put, put up on the screen if there is a color one?
There is. I can send one to Alex right now.
Okay, thank you. So that's, that I'll wait until, uh, you get that up so I can comment on that. So going back to the issue of four to one slopes. Yeah, what I, what I've seen going on is that, is that there was, there was a trade off during the hearings when the coastal commission uh, wrote our LCP. And the trade off was four to one slopes or ESHA. And so what I hear you guys saying is, oh, well, it's four to one slope, but they're really ESHA. So you want them both. You want both ESHA and four to one slopes. But that clearly was not what was happening at the coastal commission at the time this was adopted. It was, we're not gonna talk about ESHA. Oh, but four to one slopes, you can't encroach on it. That was the deal. And the, the only ESHA on the point, I think is, is, is we pointed out the other day was over in that corner of a, a gully where, uh, restaurant, uh, where, uh, the restaurant is. Secondly, there's a, there's been a subtle change about a minor modification and how that came about. I, I've heard you Craig in the past say, well, I think we ought to treat minor modifications much more like variances. And, and that's not really how it came about. When the development standards and the setback requirements were being debated and put into place, the city council actually did some very wise things. They realized that there were all kinds of shapes and sizes of lots in Malibu and you really couldn't just come up with one cookie cutter number that would fit everything. And so a minor modification was allowed as a relief back for, you know, if you wanted to move your house forward or you wanted to move it on the side, as long as you weren't destroying or adversely affecting the, uh, the neighborhood character, whatever the, uh, the, the term and the, and the finding is. Um, then you could do that as long as you didn't go over the halfway point. And it was just to allow some flexibility in the design. It wasn't supposed to be, oh no, you've got to have this house setback this much or else, you know, the world is going to come to an end. It was designed for flexibility. And particularly in this case, the house itself, you're talking about how much the house is setback. When you look at the neighbors and all the rest of that stuff, in this case, the house itself is setback. The amount that's required. It's only the, the surf shack and the trellis that intrude into that setback area. So um, I think it's, I, I would find it very difficult uh, to be persuaded that the, uh, the existence of the surf shack and the trellis somehow, uh, deleteriously affect neighborhood character. And then we've already talked about the fire department. That was the other point I was gonna make. So you have something, you, you, some, people were putting up, uh, the color coded slope analysis.
I've sent it over. It, it should be up in momentarily.
Can I ask, Commissioner Jennings can ask a question on, on that? On, when we had the, uh, the one over on Port's Head, not terribly long ago. I recall you being very concerned about the extent to which that driveway hung out over the slope. And it, and it wasn't until we were assured by the architect that actually it, it wasn't touching it at all that it was gonna be cantilevered by, cantilevered by a few feet. That, you know, you said, okay, well that, that'll work. But prior to that understanding, it sounded like we were all concerned. And here there, there's a retaining wall on that slope that's gonna be pretty substantial. And I, I think that's pretty well prohibited. So I, I'm not sure how you.
Well, I wonder, uh, that's, that's my question, uh, Craig, as to whether or not that retaining wall is on the four to one slope or not. Uh, and I'm sorry, now I've got a chance to look at it and I see that this is the, uh, this is the, the, the sheet that I was looking at in black and white.
Yeah.
Um, and where's the color code? So what it, what it shows is it just, just to the, uh, north of the, um, of the edge of the, of the driveway is what a sort of a salmon color. Where's the, where's the keys? Can't find the key.
Is, is it possible to zoom in on this at all, Alex? And if you can, maybe zoom in on the key to start and then we can zoom.
Of that map.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to read. That, thank you, Alex.
Okay, it looks like salmon is ten percent of that's a two to one. And then the, the lighter green is minimum slope four to one, maximum slope three to one. What does that mean? Can you zoom out? I'm sorry.
Yeah, this, the salmon is from two to one to one to one.
Yeah.
And the, the way they've drawn it here, they've got that backed up directly against the retaining wall. But when you look at the section plans, you, you see the retaining wall is, the slope is already starting down.
Well, I would think that, I, I would think that they're putting the retaining wall right at the edge of the driveway, right? Is that not right?
Yes. And this is a variable.
So. And so it's just a question of, 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 you know, I hate to get into these situations because basically we're sup, what we're supposed to be doing is, is having the licensed experts come to us and tell us what the situation is. And, and then we go out and measure it on our own and say, well, it looks this like. I'm uncomfortable with that frankly. Uh, I think our job is to, is, you know, is to, is to, first of all, it, it, to, to do otherwise, puts us in the same territory where you are, which is that this surveyor is either incompetent or a liar. And I, you know, that's very tough for me to take. I can't, I can't, uh, I, I, I've got basically this guy's license and your pictures of people and it's and it's stuff. I don't know. I, I have a difficult time.
I, I, I agree too. And I, I have a hard time saying it's exactly that reason. I'm just saying there's, there's a discontinuity somewhere and whether it's the analysis or the polls or, or, you know, that it, it just doesn't add up on the ground.
Well, I, 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 what, what do you, what do you think the solution is? To just deny the project?
If they moved the project closer to that back corner, ten feet closer to the street, they could make it work.
Well, no, but no, you're assuming you're right.
I, I, yeah, I am assuming I'm right. I am right.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah. Forgive me, but I have a little bit of a problem with that.
I mean, one, one option here would be to, uh, continue it and have staff, anybody that wants to walk out there and look at it.
But you're, I'm not interested in people walking out and I, and eyeballing it. What I'm interested in is surveyors. And ordinarily, what I would say, well, if you had an objection to this survey, you should have had it surveyed and, and come in and say, you know, show the surveys wrong.
Well, I understand.
In my mind, this is the, the, the licensed survey gets a presumption that needs to be overcome.
Yeah. And, and when you have a project opponent, typically they would be asked if they want to, you know, invited to bring their own surveyor to look at it and compare it. But this isn't quite that circumstance.
And that's a great.
Okay, so Jennifer, Jennifer's got her hand up. She, Jennifer's the project, uh, uh, manager, I assume. And, uh, let me ask her if she's got any information that could help us out with the survey issue.
Yeah.
Can you run? You to her?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, thanks for your time. I just wanted to shed a little light on this as well. Obviously, as we spoke about before, this lot, while it's quite deep, there's only a very limited amount of space that is actually a buildable pad. So to your point, we were very, very conscious once we designed this, this project to start from the first moment that we could build, right? And that gave us our buildable pad. So we backed up and we worked backwards from that point. So you can see that we are bordering that, not, those non-buildable slopes, working backwards, making sure we have the, the twenty feet, then putting the house as close as we could, while also trying to maintain that front yard setback as you guys, um, mentioned earlier, we, we did everything we could to, um, meet all the, the regulations of this lot. We tried to meet the front yard setback. We tried to meet the four to one slope, which I would argue we did here with everything that we have to our knowledge from licensed surveyors, from all of our expertise, from all of the many different people who reviewed this over the last two years that we've been in the planning process. You know, we, we reviewed this over and over. To your point, you know, we could have put the garage in the front yard setback, but we felt this was a better use of the property and less disturbance to the neighbors to put a very shallow trellis in the front versus a larger garage in the front yard setback. So again, everything we're doing here is to, is trying to have the most minimal impact on the site. Um, and again, all we can go off of is this color coded slope band analysis was slope band analysis, excuse me, which was the origin of every design element you see here. Um, so as opposed to just starting over with a new slope band analysis, I don't know what more we could do to prove to you that we've attempted to follow every regulation here.
Right. What, what?
When you, when you go, when you, excuse me, when you go forward with, with the, the, the process, what, what is the process of delineating the the, the, the northernmost development elements, the, 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 the edge of the, the, I guess it's the retaining wall.
Right, absolutely. Right. So the very first thing we do, and when we start any project is we get the survey and the very first thing we ask for before we design anything is the color coded slope band analysis. And that's the first thing we tell any clients because we will not design without it. So again, everything here, we set that retaining wall on the border, make sure that we have L shaped footings, not T shaped footing. So we're not going into there. Uh, we're, we're doing everything we can to respect that, that boundary. But again, if you say, well, we could push it back ten feet, well, what's the arbitrary number that is gonna that's gonna accept that, right? If, if, if we can't go by what a licensed surveyor has told us and you're saying we can push it back ten feet, well, would five feet do? Would fifteen feet do? Like what's going to, if, if we don't have any scientific licensed document to prove that we're complying. You know, that, that's the origin of the entire design.
Well, I, I came up with the tough number just because it's pretty cool, easy to see the stump is about eight feet based on the height of the, the fencing material. And, and then it drops off the other side of the stump. So, you know, give or take roughly the, the difference we're talking about here is about ten feet. Another thought, and I don't know how, how plausible this is, but maybe this survey was done in twenty twenty one. Uh, if there had been some sort of cataclysmic slumping of, of the edge of the, that, I don't know what we call it. It's not a bluff per se, or maybe it is. Uh, but if, if that had slumped some bit, then I guess the brush that's on there would not have grown back in time to be as, as big as it is. So, but you know, stuff grows quickly. I'm always surprised at how fast things grow around here. So.
You know, we've had twenty seven inches of rain this year.
Yeah, exactly. So I don't know. I mean, if, if that thing slumped five feet, say, uh, maybe it doesn't need to be the full ten feet. Maybe it was five feet. Maybe that would account for how it's different now, but it just doesn't. You know, that, if it was as recent as twenty twenty one, that also seems unlikely.
Well, all right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, um.
Yes?
I'll make a motion.
I was gonna make, make a motion to approve the project. I mean, absent some site survey that shows me something catastrophically different than what's here, this is what we have to go off of. So, um, make a motion to adopt planning commission resolution twenty three dash twenty five. And all the other numbers that go along with that. And be very certain in the condition of the project that no development is to occur in any part of the four to one slope. Aside from the said, uh, irrigation and drainage line.
How, how tall is that retaining wall supposed to be in the end? Just by way of checking it in the future.
I think you can see that on that, uh, A three point O.
Yeah, that's a couple of feet or maybe three feet.
Yeah, it's not very high.
Three feet, three and three quarter inches.
Yeah, I, I, I'll be interested to see that when, when this project is done. I, I, I'm gonna guess it's twice as high as that.
Well, let's hope not. I don't think that Doug likes to mess with a four and one slope.
And the inspectors let that go, Commissioner Hill, nobody's gonna, they're not gonna be able to do that. It's on the plan.
Well, if, if, if they're like you, they'll say, gee, this has a lot of inertia. Let's just say yes, because that'll make everyone.
That's a, that's an incorrect statement. When the inspectors come out, they have a set of plans. They'll look at it. If it's taller than it's supposed to be, then it won't be there. It's that simple. You, you and Commissioner Maza have the wrong idea about how stuff works.
Don't, don't group me with him on this.
Uh, you just made me. But go ahead. So I'll second the motion.
And would you like me to call the roll?
Please.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll move up.
Roll call please.
My apologies. A motion to adjourn from Commissioner Pete.
From, uh, Chair Smith.
Chair Smith, thank you. Um, Chair Smith?
Yeah, second of, Commissioner, uh, Jenny, or yeah.
Jotting down the record for the last one while they're not listening carefully enough. So Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
You are adjourned.
Thank you.
Go out and look at it, guys. Wear your heavy boots and long pants because there's a lot of fox tails.
I'll be there tomorrow.
Do it, do it. Check it out. Good night, everybody.
Hi, everyone.